So everyone, welcome to tonight's council meeting of Tuesday, November the 28th, where we'll be dealing with our capital budget. I welcome everyone from the gallery. Typically, we start off our meetings with the singing of the National Anthem. Tonight, we are going to have a recorded version sung by Kristin Patterson. Kristin sang the song at the Remembrance Day ceremony, so we are going to play that today. Her daughter will be also sang this year at one of our ceremonies, her daughter Reese. She'll be singing at the December 12th meeting in two weeks. So Kristin Patterson is a Chippewa resident, born and raised here. She's a funeral director at Morrison Sun Funeral Home, has been there for 19 years. She's been singing since the age of four. Today's rendition of the National Anthem will be sung by her, so if you would please stand as we play the National Anthem as sung by Kristin Patterson.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise. The true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Super. And next up is the land acknowledgement and traditional Indigenous meeting opening. We acknowledge and thank the Indigenous peoples who were stewards of this land for millennia before us. I'd like to invite Brian Kahn, who's a local artist of Métis descent and an advocate in the Indigenous community, to share his testimony.
Tansy, Brian Kahn, Nautishika Shon, Niagara Falls, New Wiccan. Naitaniska Wakamakana, Gillina Wak, Mashka Geywak, Ekwa Métis. So low ingredients to all. My name is Brian Kahn, I live in Niagara Falls, but my ancestors, they come from the north, from the far north, they are the Musquegee, and I am Métis. So I'm going to start the meeting today with what is known as a traditional opening. And we don't know what your day was like as everyone gathers here in the meeting. Somebody may have had a fight with a spouse member, or someone may have cut them off as they were driving to the meeting. So if we all come together in a good way, in a good mind, and think of all the great gifts that have been given to us by the Creator. So with that, I call to Kissimmee, the Great Spirit, the Creator. And we are thankful to Him for all of the gifts that He has given to us. And the greatest of those gifts is the gift of Mother Earth. And through her, we are given additional gifts, plants and medicines that grow from the ground. We are grateful to each and every one of them, for they nourish us and they heal us as we continue through our journey. We're grateful to the tree nation, because the tree nation, the trees stand tall and proud, and they provide us with the materials to make our homes. Traditionally, they provided the materials to build our fires for staying warm and for our ceremonies. The trees and the forests and the lands are also a place for all the two-legged, the four-legged, the swimmers, the crawlers, the flyers, and we are grateful to each and every one of them. And when I think of all of those gifts that the Creator's given to us for us to use, we must be reminded that as we come across an item that we want to harvest, that we don't take the very first one that we see, whether it's a plant or an animal. We don't even take the second one that we see. It's not until we find the third that we realize that there is enough for those who follow behind us, whether it's those who follow the next day, or those who follow for generations to come. And those are the teachings of my ancestors. We are grateful for the four winds that blow in the four directions that surround us. With that, that brings the change of season and new opportunities. At this time, it is a time of harvesting of those plants. And with that, we take one of the sacred medicines, tobacco, and we lay it on the ground as a gift to Mother Earth for giving us that opportunity to grow and nourish that plant or that medicine, which ultimately comes back to us. So we're grateful for that harvest that we have. Living in Niagara, we're surrounded by water, and the water...
Seems that way. Am I, uh, my internet over here just went for a dive? So...
Oh, that might be it, yeah.
Yeah, everybody else affected, okay, so not just me.
Okay, all right, I apologize, our internet just went down. And we'll move along for now. Are we good to move along, or...
Yeah.
So did we lose Counselor Campbell, or...
No, no, we're good.
You still good? Okay, good.
All right, but what is what I cannot, I cannot screen the internal camera.
Okay, so we're gonna have to get the Wi-Fi up and running, right, to work our camera system here? All right, we're gonna move along with our meeting. In the meantime, looking for disclosures of pecuniary interest. Have any disclosures of council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to everyone's favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's reports and announcements. Now, are we gonna be able to get things on the screen, or that'll work?
Yes.
Okay. So let's just, first off, we had the Grey Cup's Sports Tourism Summit with Minister Lumsden here in the city. And we met at the Niagara Parks Power Plant. It was a great chance to discuss all the opportunities of sports tourism with the minister. I was joined that day by Counselor Patel. So anybody else that was there, right? Yep. Also, we had the CFL Player Awards took place in Niagara Falls at the Avalon Ballroom at the casino. And I was joined by Counselors Strange, Patel, and Baldinelli. And do we have a picture of that one coming up? We're having some technical issues here today, folks, bear with us as we zoom in to the picture that we had for the last announcement. It, I will talk about it for a moment. We helped take the Grey Cup to a new level this year, greater numbers, greater excitement, and I think in large part because Niagara Falls was part of the mix with Hamilton. So we're very happy to be part of the process. And there we were onstage, myself and Minister Lumsden, presenting the CFL Coach of the Year Award to Ryan Dinwiddie. So it was a big crowd, a lot of excitement, and it definitely added to the buildup and expanding the game beyond Hamilton into the Niagara region as well. So a lot of fun, a lot of excitement. We also had the CFL Grey Cup Game, and that's another picture from the CFL Player Awards as well at the Avalon Theater. We also had the CFL Grey Cup Game, and I was joined by Counselors Patel and Strange at that game, along with the mascot of the Hamilton Tie-Cats. I think that's, what is that, is that a tie cat? Is that a tie cat? What is it, what is it?
It's a beaver.
It's a beaver, okay, well, why would you have a tie cat when you can have a beaver?
Just wearing the tie. To be a good visitor.
Okay, there you go. I just wasn't sure if it was not a good costume or what it was, so. All right, so thank you to all. Also, we had the Santa Claus Parade last week and Christmas tree lighting. So I was joined by Counselors Patel, Nuussteg, Strange, Baldinelli, Lakoko, and Peter Angelo as we had thousands of people on the streets. And then afterward, we had the Christmas tree lighting as we supported the Niagara Health Foundation with the lighting of the tree. And luckily, it went off a lot better than the one did in Berry, was it, or which one was it, where only one string lit up in the tree? I don't know if you saw that. It was on late night TV last week, not a great way to get on late night TV, but every year I stress about the lighting of the tree. You remember the one year we couldn't find the guy that had to plug it in, and so the kids kept chanting, "Light that tree," and it just didn't light for a little while, felt like forever. Anyway, it worked out great, the weather was terrific, and we had a lot of hot cocoa, apple cider, and timbits for all the kids afterward, as well as collecting of their letters to Santa. So it was a nice way to kick off the season and also kick off the Winter Festival of Lights in Niagara Falls, three million lights, 75 animated displays, and very, very popular around the country. We had the Zonta's 16 Days of Activism for Gender Equality. I was joined by Counselor Patel, and there you could see Chair Jeffs of the Niagara Parks Commission as we were at the Niagara, uh, Table Rock of Niagara Parks at the brink of the falls. Just yesterday, it was a very exciting day for a lot of us. We had the Wayne Campbell Bridge Housing Building sign unveiling. Of course, that's the Carnegie Building, the original library. You'll see the scaffolding, of course, they're putting in new windows. It is, um, the building is, what's the word, help me, it's historic, thank you. And with the architectural features, special windows need to be put in. And we're happy to name that building after Wayne for his more than 40 years of community service as a school trustee, as a city councillor, as a community volunteer. He's done a lot over the years, and it was one small way of showing our appreciation. I was joined by the entire city council. We had Counselors Thompson, Lakoko, Nuussteg, Baldinelli, Patel, Strange, and Peter Angelo. So thank you to all of council. Thank you to Niagara Regional Housing for supporting this naming of this bridge housing, which now helps take homeless people and helps to reintegrate them back into a system where they can actually live in an apartment, and they could take advantage of regional and provincial services available to them to help them out with their lives. So thank you to all. There, we did have some business happenings and grand openings, and we'll run through these quickly. We had Falls Best Authentic Chinese and Japanese Cuisine opened up on the corner of Stanley and Robinson for a delicious set of foods. And I was joined by Counselors Baldinelli, Patel, and Strange. And Counselor Peter Angelo, sorry about that, Counselor Peter Angelo? I don't know why he wasn't...
I didn't make the picture.
Oh, okay, sorry, see, that's what happens, you know?
He was eating.
He was eating, and we didn't catch him, so apologies for that. We also had the, and what do they call that when you've got Chinese and Japanese?
Fusion.
Fusion. So the food, a lot of real unique foods there, so you wanna...
Get the thesaurus tonight.
Get my throat, I'm struggling with the words tonight, I don't know what it is. Nervous about my budget. We had the Fallsview Towns grand opening. I was joined by Counselor Patel and Nuussteg. And this is a redevelopment of a building that had been left largely undeveloped for a long time, and now it's put into our hotel rental inventory stake, so, stock. So really grateful and happy about that grand opening. And it's nice when you have multiple families traveling, where you can rent up to four bedrooms within one unit. So y'all have your own bathrooms, your own sleeping areas, so nice if you're traveling with other families and friends. We had the opening of the Drummond Medical Center and Simon's Drugstore. That's the place they used to repair lawnmowers and snowblowers on Drummond Road. And I was joined by Counselors Nuussteg, Baldinelli, and Patel. So we've got a, this will be another family health clinic. Right now, there's one doctor, but eventually, there'll be a series of doctors there helping take care of the community. We had the grand opening of Frame R. This is a place that does a lot of things, they're a distribution center, and they distribute a lot of products, and it's gonna employ a lot of people in our business park. And I was joined by Counselors Nuussteg, Baldinelli, Patel, and Peter Angelo? Were you at that one?
Yes.
Yes, and Peter Angelo. And...
You're not in the picture.
Yeah, and you weren't in that picture either.
Can I show you one?
It's this thing called Word.
Oh, yes, of course, understood, understood. We also had the opening at the casino last week of Overtime Sports Lounge. A pretty neat place, filled with LED video screens and good munchy food. I was joined by Counselors Baldinelli, Nuussteg, Patel, and Thompson. Congratulations to the casino for having another offering, another reason to come to the casino, another reason to be entertained, and a fun way to take in all the games, whether it be cricket, football, hockey, or otherwise. We also had the grand opening of Cafe Del Baudre. That just opened up yesterday on Victoria Avenue. We were joined by Counselors Baldinelli, Thompson, Nuussteg, and Patel. Congratulations to our newest entrepreneurs in Niagara Falls. And lastly, just this morning, we had the grand reopening of the nearly new thrift store. I was joined by Counselor Patel. And talk about having some really neat items in there, some really neat, if you're into thrifting, they had some nice high-end stuff available too. So whether it's clothing or items for your house, a lot of neat items, supporting big brothers and big sisters. So thank you to all for the grand opening. We did have a couple of flag raisings this week. We had one for AIDS Awareness Week and World AIDS Day and Aboriginal AIDS Awareness Week. I was joined by Counselors Thompson and Patel for that one. And we had one wrapped in courage flag to promote gender equality. And I was joined by Counselors Patel and Nuussteg out at Rosberg Park. So thank you to all. Our next council meeting will be the last meeting of the year, which will be Tuesday, December the 12th. So thank you to all. So moving along to appointments. So we've got first on the agenda, we have a request from Mosin Al Ghazali. Is Mosin here? Okay, great. Mosin is a resident of Niagara Falls. He wishes to present a petition to council regarding the most recent property tax increase. I understand another resident, Francis Cortez? Is he, yes, yes? Wishes to address council on the same issue and will also submit a petition. So Mr. Al Ghazali, welcome. You have five minutes to address the council and then any subsequent questions that may come up from that. So welcome. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for giving us the chance to present our case. I think I can move. There are a number of impacts on homeowners and local businesses. And let me just try this one here. First, the increase in property tax may force some residents to sell or relocate, so this is kind of a displacement risk. Second, it will reduce affordability, making it harder for local families to enter the housing market. Third, newcomers or residents of other communities will lose interest in moving to Niagara, which was a great destination for Toronto residents as an example. And fourth, new investors will not be attracted or having any incentives to invest in Niagara. So what is the impact on local businesses? Certainly, there will be a decline in consumer spending in local communities. The economy has been slowed down since COVID, and this property tax increase will definitely slow it down much further. And it will affect the unemployment rate, which has been already hurt in Niagara. And if I can pull from the statistics, Canada's unemployment rate is already at 5.7%, whereas in Niagara region, unemployment rate is reaching 7%, which is 23% higher than the national average. At the same time, if we look at the average family income in Ontario, it's estimated at about 98,000, whereas in Niagara or St. Catherine area, it is only about 79%, which is 19% lower than the provincial average. And this puts Niagara population already at disadvantage, and has less disposable income to afford, you know, their living, which, you know, this has, you know, another impact from the increase of property taxes. And finally, considering this impact or these impacts on homeowners and local businesses, we have to come up, we have to open dialogue with residents to find proper solutions. Among the proper solutions, we need to encourage businesses... Among the proper solutions, we need to encourage business growth and attract a new industries to stimulate the local economy and generate additional revenues. We also need to freeze a new hiring for the next year or so. We are already in Niagara Falls, a multi-tier city government compared to mostly or other cities such as Toronto. Uh, the number of elected members in Niagara cities and regional and region is higher compared to other cities in Ontario. And this definitely put, uh, as actually the biggest impact or the biggest item on the budget. We need to balance the budget. We need to optimize expenses and minimize impact of tax.
worsening social and economic circumstances. When this year we were smacked with a hefty increase in water services and a significant increase in our property taxes with a total of 11.8% in the annual tax increase. For so many, these increases together seem to be the straw that broke the camel's back. Hundreds of residents have expressed feelings of being strangled, no longer being able to make ends meet with the city, with the city adding another insult to the many financial injuries over the past two to three years. We have taken away from a large majority of people, any disposable income that they might have had. Income that they might have had to use for prescription medication, winter jackets and boots for their children, food, donation of food banks, dental care, et cetera. I believe I can safely say that our mental health problems will continue to escalate as more people have lost and are on the brink of losing their homes and rental apartments. And many who do hang on to them will have no funds left for sudden unforeseen repairs, whether it's for furnaces, windows, vehicles or prescription medication. In other words, I'm saying that many are hanging by a thread. All it takes is one unexpected bill such as the property tax and water bill increases this year to put families on the brink of financial crisis. You may know that homelessness, or sorry, hopelessness and financial loss or instability are risk factors for depression and suicide. By significantly increasing property taxes and water services amidst the plethora of rising costs we are experiencing, municipal governments and the region are actually contributing to reducing the ability of residents to thrive and strengthening the risk factors such as deteriorating economic status, loss of housing and increasing food insecurity, each of which will contribute to more anxiety, more depression, suicide, compromised health in general, increased substance use. Why? Because this is what hopelessness, homelessness, impoverishment and desperation does. So I'm asking, is this the direction in which we wish to go? I submit along with many others that the total annual tax increase for Niagara Falls of 11.8%, which does not include the water bill, was harsh and detrimental. There is nothing about this increase that is congruent with the declaration of a state of emergency for homelessness, mental health problems and opioid addiction, nor is it congruent with the current state of food insecurity in Niagara Falls. There is truly something amiss. It is crucial that both the region, both the region and city councils consider the current economic and social climate in all, sorry, social climate in all upcoming decisions. Our residents do not have a limitless ceiling. Many of their coffers are dry. For those who weren't in debt before, many now are. Thus in short, I am urging you on behalf of hundreds and probably thousands in our city to give serious thought and consideration to your decisions for 2024. Some have asserted we should be asking to reverse the increases or some of it, or stabilize it and/or reconsider any proposed increase in property taxes and water for 2024 in light of the outrageous financial demands experienced by thousands who are choking and drowning in one cost increase after another. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, uh, for our presenter of council?
Can I have just one more comment?
Uh, well, do we have any, is there anyone else, Mr. Clerk, to speak? You don't have any else? If, can you keep it under one minute?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you could, please, yeah.
Yeah, just another thing, if we look at Niagara Falls, USA, while the USA context is different in terms of housing, but they have a plan to decrease property tax for the next two, three years. And there is a statistics about this. The other thing is budget, uh, normally is spent on maintaining road. Niagara Falls city especially, the infrastructure is still in bad shape in terms of maintenance. The waste management have been instead of weekly for the solid management is bi-weekly. So, uh, in my area, for example, snow removal. Uh, we are not near schools, we are not in main roads. So even snow removal, I don't see it. Uh, so there is the valid or the claim that budget is, is spent on services is not true because there is one notice that we, uh, right before the elections, we saw all these heavy equipment bathing the streets and I'm assuming it was only for, uh, for marketing or for advocacy at that time or for election purposes. And I hope, you know, budget can be balanced and I'm, uh, you know, from, from the heart of, you know, citizens and all the people who signed the petition with me. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to, uh, thank both the presenters. I know, um, from the standpoint of paying taxes, nobody wants to pay more taxes. Uh, we've had a longstanding tradition here for at least a decade that, you know, we only approve increases that are around the rate of inflation. Last year was an anomaly. I just wanted to talk though about a couple of things that I did hear the presenters mention. One is the water and wastewater bill. For the large part, we're beholden to the Niagara region because they're the ones that control water and wastewater. I don't know if you've read any of the articles, but for next year, they've already increased the rates by eight percent. That is something that, I mean, unless we were to reduce our overall budget by eight percent, we can't make it revenue or we can't make it neutral for the, for the user. We have to follow the lead of the region. We're the ones that have to collect on their behalf. The other one that was mentioned, Your Worship, was waste collection. Waste collection again is part of the region's responsibility. And then the other one that no one mentioned yet, but I believe that they've already approved an increase for next year is the transit budget. So, I mean, I can appreciate that, you know, Mrs. Cortez, um, talked about the fact that the, the average increase was 11.8%. But I think the region's increase last year was astronomical in my opinion. I think it was around 18%. And, and, and that's what drove everyone's bill up. So, um, we've already given instruction to our staff for this year that we want to see a budget that's between two and a half and three and a half percent. I understand you're at zero. Um, in order for us to be at zero, it means that we're going to have to delete some things that we already had in there because due to labor laws, our wages go up every single year. So I don't know if that helps you a bit from where we're coming from, um, you know?
I also hear that impact would assist next year.
I'm happy if you want to stand up and speak to us.
To have an increase of four percent of property tax when impact assessment is done in 2024 or eight years after 2016 last assessment. This is another impact or another, uh, major risk on, on the residents?
Maybe we'll get our CAO to address that. Mr. CAO?
Yeah, it's a misconception that an impact increase increases people's taxes. That's not how, uh, taxes are. Uh, taxes are levied on the total assessment. So the only way your taxes go up because of an impact assessment is if your property value increases greater than the average value. But if everyone's property value goes up the same percentage, there is no increase in taxes. There's actually some very good videos out there and I think we did a link on our website to explain that just because your impact assessment goes up or down does not necessarily mean that's change in the actual amount of taxes you pay. We, we levy a budget of $80 million and that's divided up by the, it's like cutting a piece of pizza. You can cut it into 12 slices or eight slices. It's the same size of pizza. And the impact assessment is the denominator, uh, that, that, that is spread out again. So if everyone's property value goes up, everyone's piece of pizza stays the same. Uh, but so that's a, that's a common, uh, that's a common error and I think we actually put it on our website to, uh, uh, to do it. In fact, we asked a question specifically on that because we hear that routinely.
Yeah, it's not really a back and forth debate. That's why I apologize. We had our two speakers. So the speakers are done if you didn't register as a speaker. Now it's just the council now addressing the comments. Counselor Baldenelli?
I'd like to thank both speakers for their contribution to this, uh, this meeting. Very, very educational. Um, but I'd like to maybe for everybody else, ask the CAO to address what it would take to actually have tax increase of zero percent.
Mr. CAO?
Um, I just looked at our old report. Uh, so the report where we, uh, took budget guidance earlier, um, we're expecting our inflationary increase to be, uh, about 3.9%, which means if we don't do anything, our costs will go up about $6 million. So to find $6 million in our budget, there's certain things you really can't touch. So you can't touch our debt payments. That's a contractual obligation. You really can't touch fire, uh, for a variety of reasons. You really can't touch, um, you know, winter control maintenance because there's obligations, uh, to clear the roads, uh, in a certain way. So what $6 million is, means closing all the libraries. Our library levy support is about five point some odd million dollars. Or we close all our recreational facilities. That's the challenge. Council only has, you know, and, and I, I think the new councillors kind of realized this in the first budget, there's only so much of the budget that they can control. You know, and, and listen, I feel, you know, I, I, I have same issues with, with taxes, being a taxpayer. You know, the police services budget, for example, dwarfs the size of the, of the city of Niagara Falls budget. If you took out of all of our emergency services, police, fire, ambulance, that makes up about 40% of our budget, but we can't really touch that. So 40%, the biggest parts of our budget is essentially off limits. So unfortunately councils start to only really have control over things like parks, things like hockey arenas, things like libraries. So to, to wipe out $6 million, you'd be wiping out whole departments such as recreation, such as libraries, such as bylaw enforcement. And that's the challenge, uh, in the system. Uh, do I like the answer? Uh, no. Uh, the only thing I will plug is just to be clear, and I did the presentation last year during the budget process, our inflationary increase in taxes, or if you looked at our taxes over the last 10 years, taxes in the city of Niagara Falls went up less than what a price of a Big Mac went up in the same time period. So, and in this year's budget, if we come in at three and a half percent, that's going to be lower than our inflationary pressure. So we're finding cuts and savings. So at some point in time, you know, we have to be able to either keep up with what the price costs are, or we have to do cuts in services. And that's, that's the challenge. And unfortunately, the cuts that we have are directed at things that families actually use in a lot of those supports. So for those families that are struggling, not having a recreational center, um, we as a municipality here have supported quite significantly our food bank that other cities don't do. And that would be a, a logical cut for a lot of municipalities, but we choose not to do that and that puts pressure on other taxpayers. But those are the tough decisions that unfortunately our councillors have to, to make, uh, when it comes to that. And we're still going to try to get to a below inflationary increase this year, but $6 million would wipe out, uh, like I said, we could wipe out libraries, we could wipe out recreational facilities. That would be what you would take to, to pick up $6 million.
Also, uh, you know, I'd add, you know, we're dealing with the Mitchellson pool, you know, it's going to cost a million dollars. So we've got pressures, people saying, don't you dare close it. So we're trying to justify a pool that use 10 weeks of the year versus going toward indoor pools. Uh, the other thing I will say in defense of us comparative to the other Niagara Regional, um, municipalities, we're the eighth lowest property taxes in the region, the eighth lowest. And only three of us have full-time fire departments while in St. Catherine's and Niagara Falls. That makes up what 28% of our budget approximately? So, I mean comparatively, we're doing well. Last year's a, a very difficult comparison because it was a correction year. We came off of COVID. The casinos were closed for two years. Niagara Falls was shuttered. We're a service town and people were out of work. And as our CAO said, we give hundreds of thousands to our food bank. Other cities around the region don't do that. We do that. Social services are important. I just mentioned the Wayne, the Wayne Campbell Building. That's our old library that we gave for bridge housing for the homeless in the community. We gave it to the region. I mean, we're playing our part, trying to do our part in the community and keep our taxes down. Property, I'm sorry, the rate of inflation last year was 8.1%. We came in at 7.9%. We try to come in, but it's hard, the inflation, we buy gas just like you buy gas. We buy supplies just like you. Our asphalt went up just like everybody's asphalt went up. So it's hard without, so then we say, where are we going to cut? How are we going to? It's not an easy task. I wish it was because we all pay taxes just like you and we don't like it either. But we've given guidance to our staff this year to come in between two and a half and three and a half percent. That's our plan this year. And, and I know we wish, even one year we came in at zero a few years ago. And then even then, people said, it should have been below zero. It's not as easy as, it sounds really easy. It's very difficult. We're trying to do a lot with not a lot. So I just want to say, I appreciate the comments. I called every single person back that wanted to yell this year because of our property tax increase. And none of us like it. And sometimes it's tough medicine coming out of COVID. You know, it wasn't that long ago, we forget how our world was upside down and Niagara Falls was hurting and we weren't getting our property taxes and we had to give people time, extra time to pay. It was a very difficult time. But I tell you, this council's been working very hard to get this year's budget under control with the knowledge knowing we have two levels of government here. Unlike Hamilton, unlike Toronto, unlike Ottawa, unlike London, we have two levels and we've been saying we should have one. And, and, and I would ask you to be very vocal. We have 126 municipal politicians in Niagara. 126. And if you want to compare up the street to Hamilton, they have 16. 126, 16. Do the math. Toronto, right? Same thing, right? They've got 45. So they've, our 26, I'm sorry, they had 47, they have 26. 26 in Toronto. We have 126. So we've been working and pleading with the government, please help us reduce a level of government. And we think there could be a lot of savings and efficiencies and we believe that's the answer.
What do we do? How, I know I have been forcing that and I, and I have emailed, but how do we?
So I would, that's a great question. And, and right now the government's listening, they're going to be doing the review in January, I believe, Mr. CAO, is going to be the hearings?
Yes.
So in January it'll be published, it'll be, we'll be publishing it and publicizing it. This is where the citizens can go in and say, we can't afford two levels of government anymore. It's time to remove. And, and I can tell you, when the premier was here last year, he used the word disgusting. It was just disgusting how many politicians you have here. And I agree and I've been saying, it doesn't make me popular when I go to the region. But let's call it what it is. This, we're one of the few councils that went from 12 to eight. That was 20 years ago. Went from, well, reduced ourselves. Well, they'll be told from 12 to eight. You don't see that happening. They talk about it, but they don't do it. And the region actually got bigger. Went from 31 to 32. So what we're saying is, so that would be one, when they have the public hearings, Minister Calander, the Minister of Municipal Affairs, let him know, the people have had enough, we've had enough. And, and the other thing that you can do is when you, when you write letters to the editor, talk to your friends, help us in that way. That would really help. We'd have more control over our destinies than we do right now. I just want to say, I, we appreciate, this is a very diff, it's hard for us. I had my own family call me, what the heck are you doing with their taxes? And, and we all heard it loud and clear at funeral homes, wherever we work, we heard it loud and clear. Believe me, we, we were not happy about it. This year is going to be much better than last year and we hope the trend keeps like, now inflation's with 3.1, starting to come back. Things are getting a little bit normal now, housing's leveled off, but it's been crazy for us too. Just want to say on behalf of all, we appreciate you taking the time. That's what democracy is all about. You come out and tell us what's on your mind and we listen. And I'm telling you, we're listening. I just want to say thank you. We appreciate that. So I've got to, no, we can't, I'm, I'm sorry, we've had the, we've given it. Oh, can you leave? But then you're going to miss the exciting meeting though. Are you sure you want to do that? No, no, thank, I know, I appreciate that. Yes, you can. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, but just one last comment. Most people don't have high salaries. You can afford a gym and others because they have a six-digit figures. I'm sorry, I'm not picking on that.
Yeah.
But most families do not, cannot afford it.
I understand that. Yes, Counselor La Coco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only see from here up on, can we move those points? Set us, I'm, I'm missing your whole face.
Yeah, yeah, I can do like that. How's that, is that better? Okay, no problem. No, 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 because we want to, it's Christmas, man.
I was going to say, you can add it.
No, we had that because they can't see it. That's good, that's good. Block me in.
I can't, I can barely see, I don't know, there, there's voices over there, I can't see.
They asked that I block you. They didn't want to be having to look at you today. Okay, moving along to, uh, five reports, Strong Mayor's Act update to the budget. So Mr. Clerk, do you want to walk us through what our next step would be for 5.1?
Well, 5.1 is an information report.
Do we have to receive the petitions?
That would be a good idea, yes. Let's go back and do that, just receive and file.
Councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Baldenelli, that the receiver, the petitions be received. All those in favor? Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you so for reports here. The first one, Strong Mayor's Act, is an update to the budget process, and that report is for the information of council. If there's any questions specifically to that process, I believe our finance staff could lead us through that.
Okay. Looking for a motion to receive the report, 5.1. Councillor Newstagg, second by councillor Strange, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you. So now we move on to 5.2, the mayor's proposed draft parking budget. So I'm going to pass this along to our treasurer, Ms. Clerk. I think I've given her enough of the background information that she can present now. If you need any help, I'm just over here. And we'll ask Ms. Clerk if you want to lead us in this part. You can. I'm just going to let, I want her to, she's got to learn to stand on her own two feet, so it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess through you. Here's your mayor's proposed 2024 parking budget. It's a good news story this year. So we started with a five-year history, look back at the actuals. Just wanted to point out, 2019 was our last successful year in parking until recently. So we had a $223,000 surplus in 2019, and then enter COVID, we ended up with a $410,000 deficit in 2020. That was a combination of COVID as well as council removing the parking on Clifton Hill to widen the sidewalks, which was necessary. It just resulted in a loss to the parking budget. 2021, we had a deficit of 667,000. Both 2020 and 2021 were covered by Safe Restart funding. And then in 2022, less of a deficit, 236,000. But looking forward to now, right now, currently, we're trending at a $450,000 surplus, which is wonderful news. This money will go into our parking reserve fund, which at the moment only has about $45,000 in it. And this can be used for future capital projects in parking or rough years. If we have another rough year where we have a deficit, we'll have a smaller pot of money that we can lean on and not have to rely on any tax rate stabilization or impact the levy. So this is good news that parking's moving back towards a self-sustaining state. And then looking forward to the 2024 budget, our fines. Last year, council increased the fines and the permit revenue. You can see that's been effective. We're looking to increase the budget on fines about 15% from 476,000 up to 550,000. Although there's a decrease in permit revenue, this can largely be explained by Lot 16, which is Kitchener, the hospital. So that was the first year with Lot 16. In 2023, staff estimated permanent permit revenue of about 21,000. It did not happen, so we've reduced our permit revenue estimate by 15,000 down to 6,000 for that lot. So although we've reduced by 15,000, you can see the actual overall reduction in permits is only 7,700, and that's because we've had small increases in permit revenue in the other lots. Again, the user fees, they've rebounded quite nicely as well. We're projecting a 35% increase from our 2023 budget up to 860,000 for a total revenues of 1.5 million dollars. And then looking over at the expense side, it's fairly consistent. Small increase in staffing, 2.3%, right around our mandated labor increase, small increase in employee benefits. Although overtime's doubled, it is a small amount overall. This overtime would be just related to special events. And then we've got our materials budget, small decrease, small, very small decrease in contract service. Rents and financials, although it looks like a large increase, it's directly related to the user fee increase. These are the fees for debit credit transactions, so the more money you collect, the more fees they're going to pay. And then our internal transfers is just our indirect cost allocation to parking. So that's your balanced budget for parking. I'm not going to go through these two slides in detail, but this is just a look at the responsibility centers in, by each lot, as well as parking maintenance and parking control. So you can see the changes there. Nothing too drastic. The major change in parking maintenance is actually us reducing the levy contribution down to zero. We don't need a levy contribution this year because it is projected to be self-sustaining. And then down in parking control services at the very last line there, you can see that's a decrease as well, and that's a result of the increase in the fine revenue. So that's it. I kept it short and sweet. I'm still a little traumatized from the 1:30 AM meeting. So those are your recommendations on the screen. And those are also covered in, there's a companion report on your agenda that does explain those variances in greater detail. And if you have any questions, Paul Brown is here, the manager of parking.
And I know he would love questions. Councillor Newstagg.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Paul. Just questioning about the permits. So we have gone, we're forecasting a lower amount for permits, even though last year was a higher amount?
Yes, through the mayor. Basically, what happened is we acquired some property over by the hospital, and instead of just sitting on it, we opened up a parking lot to see if we can utilize what was currently being occupied as free parking. People were looking for other ways to park around the hospital. We basically did a car count and estimated around 50 vehicles that we might have as potential permit holders. Once we did implement the parking and get it up and running, the numbers being used then were down to about 13. People found they didn't want, they went for other locations. So we did a projection around 21,000 for the year, and then we came in around 4,000 or 5,000. So that's where that shift comes in. We basically then said, "Okay, we're going to align it to what the actuals are now," and that's where that drop comes in.
But the actual is quite higher than like 2023. We had 192,000. And then our budget is 149 for next year. Am I reading that right?
I thought it was 157 was the actuals, and then it went down to 140. So about $8,000 difference.
Okay, there we go. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a decrease, a loss in parking lot number eight and number 13. Will that be normal to have a decrease all the time, or are we planning on doing something different? Or do we just run it as a loss?
Through the mayor. I do anticipate an increase in Lot 8. I can't predict it because Lot 8 is central on Huron in the downtown core, and there's a lot of changes coming in the downtown. So I do anticipate a shift upwards, but I don't want to just do a guess. We're going to go by what the numbers based on our actuals right now are. And Lot 13, it saw an increase because it was an overflow lot for, during the construction of the Exchange Hub. So we've moved a lot of the permit holders that way. Now with the Exchange Hub opening and permit holders being able to move back, we realigned it to try to say, "Well, potentially, they won't be in that lot. They'll be back in '12." And then we will wait to see what the usage will be, especially with that new facility there. They potentially can all see an increase in usage based on the new activity that will happen. But until I can see what's happening with that property, we're going to go with a conservative number.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Two other questions. On page five of the presentation, there's parking maintenance. In 2023, it was 90,212. For 2024, it's anticipated at 257,176. What is the difference? Why is it so much more?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat that?
Page five, the second line, parking maintenance.
That's, you're seeing that? That's us removing the injection from the tax rate stabilization reserve. So we removed the 156,000 that would have been budgeted in 2023 from that area. And then the increases that have made up that amount are sprinkled in different responsibility centers, not solely in that one. And if I can go back to Ruth An's question for a quick second, 192,000, the reason you're seeing that, we settled a longstanding, it was a lawsuit, but agreement that gave us $30,000 of license revenue in this budget, and that will not be an annual ongoing thing.
And the last question, I had three different residents contact me and wonder why we even bother doing the parking because we used to have a loss every year. I know that this year we're looking at a positive surplus, but that was the question. Why are we investing all of this time, effort, money, people to lose money? Would we just be better off not having it? So I'd like a response for that.
Mr. Brown, would you like to address your thoughts on that?
Well, I can only say that generally up until 2019, parking was pretty self-sustaining. There would be a bit of a shortfall. A lot of it has to do with the overall maintenance and cost of running the operation. If council elects to not want to be in the business of selling parking and parking lots, they're welcome to do so. That would be council's choice.
Thank you. I was just wondering why, if you're losing money at certain things, is it worth doing? I guess the other part of it is, if, is it a free-for-all? Then if you have no sort of guidelines and permits and that sort of thing, is it just a free-for-all? So I just wanted to get that answer for a few residents.
Okay, thank you for that. Did you have anything you want to add? Let's just say, oh, may I jump into?
I would just say that I think this city and some of the BIAs had previously complained about the quality of some of the parking lots, and we brought in bylaws and that kind of stuff. And by owning and controlling some of our own parking lots, we can maintain a certain standard for the city also. But like Mr. Brown said, we've always made money on parking up until COVID. And we are back making money at it, and it provides an asset that actually the taxpayers don't pay for. Taxpayers always want parking. We get a lot of complaints for parking. And if you didn't have the money to maintain the lots, the reality is we would have less parking and more complaints for not having parking. So this is a way for us to maintain a level of parking inventory without actually charging the taxpayer for it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Patel. Okay. Are there any other questions of council? Okay, all right, seeing none. So we're looking for a motion to...
I'm going to move the first ever mayor's budget.
Motion by councillor Peter Angelo.
Well done. You've got a little bit of sweat there in your brow. Still from working up the numbers.
It's not been easy. It looks easy, but it isn't. Let me tell you.
I hear there's a lot of accounting firms that want to hire you, though.
Well.
There's six pairs of socks in his office from all the accounting that was going on.
So we've got a motion by councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Newstagg, that we accept and approve the six recommendations of the 2024 State of Niagara Falls mayor's proposed capital budget. Oh, wait a minute. Did I jump ahead? Yeah, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. My apologies. We almost got that through for you there. That we approve the three recommendations from the mayor's proposed draft 2024 parking budget as presented by our treasurer. Pardon me? All right, we've got a motion seconded. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Done. Well, that's good. Well done. Thank you for that. Moving on to 5.3. I don't know if you're ready, Ms. Clerk, if you're ready, or how you're feeling. Okay, we're going to have James. We're going to have Mr. Dowling. We're going to see, and I've been going over his briefing notes with him. So hopefully, we're good and he's comfortable. If there's water up there, if you get nervous.
We're good, we're good.
That's some, it's just, councillor Newstagg will bring you over some water. All right, so we're ready. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Dowling, and he's going to take us through our 2024 State of Niagara Falls mayor's proposed capital budget.
Perfect.
For anybody that's not familiar with Mr. Dowling, he's currently our senior manager of finance. He's a whiz with the numbers. And luckily, he was able to keep up with me, so the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, your worshipful members of council. Of course, the mayor introduced me. My name is James Dowling. I'm the senior manager of capital accounting with the city. And it's my privilege to present the 2024 mayor's proposed capital budget. As you're probably aware, at the last meeting, the mayor provided direction to staff to prepare the budget, so we get to present it on his behalf today. Going through the quick agenda, so I'll provide a quick introduction. We'll talk about the 2024 capital budget at a glance. We'll discuss the importance of asset management with respect to the capital budget, some key highlights, and next steps. So just laying the landscape from an economic perspective. So as many of you are aware, the Bank of Canada policy interest rates have increased rather substantially over time. You know, on June 1, 2022, the rates were sitting at about 1.5%. And now, as of this past July, we're sitting at about 5%. So from the city's perspective, this does have an impact on our cost of borrowing. We've seen our cost of borrowing increase roughly about 0.6% year-over-year compared to last year and over 2% since Q3 of 2021. Staff has considered that, of course, and so, you know, there, any sort of long-lived assets is where we're starting to target and allocate debt to. Just, there's a little bit more volatility in the shorter duration loans and debt instruments. So we're reacting accordingly, but want to, you know, highlight that as a possible risk factor for us. Of course, as mentioned previously, the CPI is still a little bit higher than the Bank of Canada would like. They tend to target about 2%. Year-over-year, as of Q3, which is a slightly older number that was mentioned earlier, it was still about 3.8%. So I know it's starting to settle, but it still is a little bit higher. Now, at this time last year, when we were presenting, it was at 6.9%. So it is still a pretty dramatic reduction, but an increase nonetheless. And of course, the non-residential construction costs are still up 8.1% over around this time last year. You know, of course, from our perspective, a lot of our large infrastructure projects rely heavily on a lot of these construction materials where we're seeing these increases. So it is just another cost pressure for us to worry about. Of course, where possible, staff is trying to be frugal, given the interest rate environment and all of these other competing pressures. We really like this slide as a way to illustrate how budgets work together. So the orange box is where we're focusing our attention today on the capital budget, which of course is supporting growth-related development, new assets, rehabilitation of existing assets, and strategic investments. It is funded from reserves. So you'll see reserves as an inflow, as well as debt as a possible inflow as well. Now, any surpluses that come out of potential budgets, budget spending being under what was budgeted can get transferred back to reserves, so it's a little bit cyclical there. And of course, any debt payments get serviced by the operating budget moving forward. Just at a high level of the capital budget process, so we were here this time last year presenting the 2023 capital budget. We kicked off our budget process in June of this year, providing templates and information to staff. In Q3, we brought forward a project close report to council, and that was really to start the real preparations from a financial perspective for the capital budget. It allowed us to close out completed projects, mobilize any funds, and replenish reserves to the extent we can. Again, knowing that it's going to be a bit of a belt-tightening year, we really wanted to make sure that we maximized as much funding as we could back to reserves to be able to draw it during the capital budget process this year. Of course, we spent most, a good portion of Q3 and Q4, meeting with key stakeholders. Of course, you know, as many of you realize, the capital budget wouldn't be possible without the contributions and efforts of staff across the organization. As much as finance gets to present it, you know, it truly is their budget, and we're, we just have the pleasure of presenting it on their behalf. And here we are, Q4 2023, presenting the proposed capital budget. So taking a look at the budget at a glance, in total, for, during the budget process, 158 projects were submitted. 121 of those are proposed in the 2024 capital budget, worth about $66.7 million. 37, or about a quarter of the projects, have been deferred. And again, that's where we were talking about that belt-tightening, trying to be mindful of taxpayer affordability as well as, you know, staff capacity to deliver as well. You'll see later in the forecast that, you know, these projects simply just get moved forward to future years. By no means do they disappear. It's just a matter of making sure that we're being mindful of the financial capacity that we currently have, and we're focusing on our key priorities. Similar to last year, again, we still are continuing that focus on asset management. About 2/3 of the budget relates strictly to asset management and growth-related enabling works. You'll also notice that this year, the strategic investment piece of the pie is a little bit larger. Now, of course, a lot of that has to do with some exciting investments, such as our new enterprise resource management system, the ERP, we affectionately call it, and our web redevelopment investments. You know, again, this is one of those things where they are replacing existing systems, but we've classified them as strategic investments just because they really are taking us to the next level. You know, it's the equivalent of taking, you know, an old flip phone or an iPhone 2 and upgrading it to the latest and greatest iPhone 15s, or whatever the latest phone is these days. As, you know, Jason has affectionately demonstrated for council, you know, he's had to walk around folders of papers for signing, et cetera. And, you know, this system is really designed to help us, you know, revolutionize a lot of our processes, streamline them, and, you know, workflow manage much better. In that slice of pie for strategic investments, there's also $4.3 million in affordable housing investments, which is a strategic priority for council. Some of that was approved in camera earlier this year, and this is simply the budget allocation associated. Now, taking a look at the funding at a glance, you'll notice, as I alluded to earlier, that we are drawing quite significantly on capital we are drawing quite significantly on capital special purpose reserves. Some of that is money that's been freed up through closing previous capital projects. There's also some money that had been sort of saved away, we'll say, for the purpose of helping us slowly work through our infrastructure deficit and, and get a little bit more caught up. Now, of course, as you can imagine, drawing $11 million out of reserves isn't necessarily a sustainable approach. So again, this year, we're digging deep to try to make sure that, you know, we're extracting as, as much as we can from as many sources as we can without relying too heavily on the direct tax base. However, you know, the conversation does need to be had in terms of, you know, what does the future of sustainable funding look like? Our asset management plan is largely going to help guide that discussion. And so there'll be some, you know, really important conversations in the coming years about strategies to handle that. As well, you'll notice that, you know, we've used quite a lot of grant money, $11.3 million. About $8 million of that alone is dedicated to roads and bridges-related projects, which is, you know, a heavy investment. Again, we know it's a definite need in the community, so we're doing our best to fund it to the degree that we can. Deventures, again, about $12 million. And that's, again, focused on those long-lived assets. So things like our new aerial one, sorry, our replacement aerial one fire truck, a new salt barn to replace our existing one that's end-of-life, some plow trucks, and as well that affordable housing investment. You know, really, the message here is that, you know, we really can't keep borrowing from reserves without replenishing them. So, you know, as much as it's great that we have the ability to at the moment, we just want to be mindful of those sustainable funding sources moving forward. Speaking of, in, two years ago now, we introduced a capital levy. So, you know, this truly is a sustainable funding source for the capital budget in terms of injecting, you know, currently about $1.2 million into the capital budget process. That being said, you know, in comparison to the $11 million that we're drawing and the $66 million of the total budget, it really doesn't make up an enormous portion of it, but it's helpful nonetheless. You know, if you want to look at $1.2 million, that's going to help reconstruct about 1.2 kilometers of road, or it'll help buy about three plow trucks. You know, at the end of the day, we're still working on our asset management planning, and that's really going to help drive decision-making moving forward, help us define that gap that we need to close, and, you know, really help us make those key decisions to invest on an annual basis moving forward. You know, currently, between this and the transfer that's already built into the operating budget, we're only contributing about $4.7 million from the tax budget into the capital budget, and about $12.5 million from the water wastewater budget. So, you know, you know, as we're saying, we're still on theme here in terms of we are still quite reliant on grants, and we're still quite reliant on reserve funds, and just mindful of that continuous investment. So debt is definitely, you know, a key financing tool for us. Of course, we don't want to become too reliant on it. Legislatively, we're not, our annual debt payments are not allowed to exceed 25% of own-source revenues. As many of you are aware, we brought forward a debt policy in pre, in previous years, setting a ceiling of 15%. And currently, we've actually done some debt swaps to remove some debt obligations and fund through other sources just because of the rising rate environment. So we're currently sitting at just under 50%, at 7.45%. So there definitely is the capacity, but staff is definitely being really mindful of where debt is being proposed as a funding source, just given, just given the current economic climate and, you know, the strategy involved in allocating it to those specific sort of longer-lived investments. So now focusing on asset management. Of course, you've already received the core asset management plan back in, back last year. The non-core plan is well underway, and it should be before you sometime next year. And then, following that, there's going to be a lot more investment in financing strategy and service levels. So the big change with service levels is going to be the idea that council's then going to be establishing levels of service across the city. And that's, that's going to essentially dictate the level of investment. So if you set a particular service level, there's going to be a cost associated with that. If the costs increase, council's going to be faced with increasing investment or lowering the service level. It's going to become a really good communication tool to help the community better understand, you know, how we can invest in our current, in our current assets. And it'll help council provide that guidance to staff in terms of the priorities and of investment. Speaking of, in terms of prioritizing investment, so again, of course, like we said, asset management's the foundation. So if you look at it like a house, of course, you don't want, you know, a top-heavy house with a weak foundation. So in this case, we don't want to be investing too much in service-level enhancements and strategic initiatives without that firm grasp of a foundation for asset management. The last thing we want is for those, you know, exciting investments to be at the expense of existing service levels. So this is really just to drive that point home and, on the importance as we continue to move forward and, and, and invest. I did want to draw some attention to some ongoing study work. So recently, Hempson Consulting was here to give you a bit of an update on the Development Charges Background Study. That's well underway. But there's also some large other studies that are big inputs not only to the Development Charge Background Study, but also to future capital forecasting. So the Transportation Master Plan update is a really big component, as well as the Master Servicing Plan, which is looking at all of the water, water and sewer infrastructure across the city. Again, those are going to be really important inputs to help guide our Development Charge Background Study and the future rates that we're going to be charging the development community to service the growth required for our growing city. And it segues nicely into the 10-year capital forecast. So included with the report this year was a 10-year capital forecast. You know, I owe a debt of gratitude to Teri Gudgeon and her team. They did a lot of work pulling together a lot of the existing core asset management information, along with the non-core asset information they're currently gathering as part of the asset management plan, that really formed this capital forecast, which gives council a runway of sort of the next few years to be able to anticipate some of the large strategic initiatives that are coming down the pipeline, as well as some of the large renewal needs that are going to be needed for our existing assets. Like with anything, the further out you go, it does increase the forecast risk, we'll say. So, you know, in, in the slide in front of you, we've got the proposed budget for 2024, as well as the remaining term of council. Typically, sort of the two to three years out are sort of the best quality data, we'll say, from a forecasting perspective. You know, you'll notice that 2025 is a bit of a larger amount, and it is because it includes some larger placeholders. It includes, you know, a forecasted parking garage, as well as some of the backlog of previous investments that have been deferred. So any of the 37 projects that were deferred in 2024 now show as part of 2025, as well as some of the backlog, say, of fleet vehicles that we're behind replacing, that'll also be included in there. As the budgets come forward, that prioritization process will continue, and staff will look at existing funding capacity, et cetera. But it's important to see that, you know, if a decision is made to not fund a project right now, it simply just sort of moves ahead and continues to live on in this document. This document's going to be a bit of a living, breathing document. It'll change over time. And we're excited to be able to add in a lot more growth-related information once those other studies are completed next year. So some key highlights, these are sort of the greatest hits, I'll say, of the capital budget this year. We're excited to be investing so much in sewer separations. Of course, it's going to help reduce some of the storm flows in the sanitary sewer system. You know, over the long term, that'll really help with any kind of capacity constraints. And, and, you know, in some cases, it can help mitigate some of the threat to basement flooding, et cetera. Our fleet program, we're purchasing about 43 vehicles and pieces of equipment this year, including three plow trucks, and six new vehicles that are supporting previously approved positions, along with an enhancement to be able to purchase our electric street, sidewalk sweeper. Again, affordable housing for $4.3 million. Roads investment this year, our roads program, we definitely took that seriously. And roads specifically, we're investing $6.4 million. Emergency preparedness is an exciting one for us. This is going to enable the McBain Center to be designated as an evacuation center. As we learned last year in the blizzard, we really didn't have an evacuation site with backup power that could have helped sort of be like a safe refuge for the community. So we're really excited to be able to invest in that moving forward, so that we've got a facility of that, of that caliber in the community. We obviously need to replace our, our end-of-life salt storage facility to continue to support winter operations. The sewer inspection program, this is largely to fund the backlog of sewer inspections for our storm sewer network. We really need to, again, from an asset management perspective, we really want to assess the condition of all of our storm sewers across the city. So this program might take a couple of years to get fully through, but this does represent sort of the backlog of that condition information, which again, will really help us properly forecast what the future needs are with respect to the, the storm sewer infrastructure. And of course, aerial one, very excited. Of course, many of you know, it's, it's quite a specialized truck. We're the only fire department in North America using a truck of this caliber for gorge rescues, and it is nearing the end of its life per the insurance underwriters of Canada. So given the lead time involved in building a truck of this caliber, we wanted to get the budget approval now. So we've got it in place before the vehicle's end of life. Some exciting new service improvements we wanted to highlight in the budget this year. So we are investing in pedestrian safety, including a new pedestrian signal on Kayla Road and McGarry Drive. We're investing in our first accessible play area at the McBain Park, funded by the Wonderfalls Pass charity. So this is going to allow for the installation of an accessible swing that does not require children to transfer from the, from their mobility aids to use it. We're also purchasing two water, water rescue remote robots, which will help both the fire department and St. John, St. John's ambulance rescue people from dangerous situations, especially where it's challenging or not passable or navigatable with a boat. And finally, we're looking at scoping, site selection, and initial design of a new cricket facility, cricket field facility, I should say, in the city. So that's just sort of getting that, the initial works moving for a potential new facility down the road. I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight some of our exciting modernization initiatives in the budget this year. So of course, I already sort of plugged the ERP. We're really excited that we're in the implementation phase now. So this is going to allow the city, again, not to only replace an aging system, but also, you know, more or less revolutionize some of the current processes and workflows that we have at the city, because it is a citywide software, software system. From a customer service perspective, we're excited to be able to look at investing in a one-window setup. You know, we're looking at customer-focused systems, self-serve opportunities. Ideally, we want to be able to serve customers how they want to be served. So we're really investing in that, in that, you know, citizen-facing interface there. And then finally, from a web redevelopment perspective, we're looking at not only new platforms for our internal Intranet, but also our external websites, both the city and the business development websites. We want to bring them on to the same platform that's much easier for us to manage content on, you know, a little bit easier for citizens to navigate and, and, you know, find their own way around, navigate their own way around from a self-serve perspective. And again, our, our internal Intranet site, we want to improve the backbone of that as well, from a content management perspective. Last year, we introduced a budget for participatory budgeting. This year, we're just adding an enhancement to it. So we're adding another $150,000. So there's $350,000 total for, to be allocated. The idea here is that the focus for projects will be aligned, they're going to be aligned with the Recreation, Culture, and Parks Plan, and we want citizen engagement. So we're going to make sure that citizens are able to help participate, guide the decision-making of how the funds are allocated, and how they'll be spent in the community. So finally, next steps. There was a report on the agenda earlier that spoke to this, so I'll keep this at a high level. With the new strong mayor powers, there are some changes in terms of how the budget process flows. The budget book for the capital budget was published last Thursday, so that started the 30-day review period. If council does not propose any amendments to the, to the capital budget, the 30-day period essentially expires December 23, and that's when the budget is deemed adopted. Now, council can pass a council resolution to allow the budget to be deemed adopted prior to that date. So that's, that's simply a resolution that council needs to bring forward. Now, if council does propose amendments within that 30-day review period, it then starts a 10-day veto period. And this allows the mayor to be able to veto some of those amendments if he wishes. Again, this 10 days can be reduced if, by the mayor in writing to members of council and the clerk. If all of these, of course, as you're trying to see the days add up here, if, if none of those options to reduce are taken, then we're looking at a January 2, 2024 adoption, assuming there are amendments and the mayor does not veto. And then finally, sort of the most complex scenario is if the mayor does veto some of the amendments, council then has an override period of 15 days to override the veto. This requires a two-thirds majority, and based on the outcome of that, will determine whether it's deemed adopted with the council amendments or with the mayor's veto. And again, in an extreme situation, if none of these timelines are adjusted along the way, we're looking at a deemed adoption in January of 2024. So with that, thank you very much for listening. And yeah, we're very, we're very excited. We're happy to take questions if there are.
Great job, Mr. Dowling. Well done. Just the way we rehearsed it.
Yeah, exactly.
We're going to go first to Counselor Strange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and great job, great presentation, James. I just want to, for the people that are, the thousands of people that are viewing this meeting right now, if you can explain just what the asset management plan kind of, it just kind of came into effect a few years ago, which came from the province, whether yourself or Eric. Just can you explain what the city actually has to do now, and what, how many years they have to implement? If they don't, and what's, what would happen if we don't do it in the amount of time that the province has given to us? And I know the asset management plan in all municipalities, they're, they're really, it's costing the cities and municipalities a lot, a lot of money to do this and to implement that. Just explain to the viewers, if you can. I don't know which, Eric did it last year, maybe we'll get, like James did.
I'll start.
Mr. Dowling.
I'll let Mr. Nickel correct me. So through the mayor, you're correct. So OREG 588 is really the legislation that's dictating it. So we needed to have a core asset management plan in place already, which we do. The next step is this non-core asset management plan. And then, of course, after that is this finding, financial strategy, where we need to be able to propose how we're going to be funding any kind of infrastructure deficits, coming up with a strategy to sort of close those infrastructure gaps and, and fund them ultimately. Oops, sorry. And finally, it's that level of service piece. So you're right, this is something that's legislated. All municipalities in Ontario were sort of going through the same process as we are. You know, I think the province sees the importance of needing to invest in our existing assets. And it's something that, you know, it is a best practice, and it is something that frankly, you know, the private sector has, you know, has sort of been doing. Now it's just becoming a mandate in the public sector. In saying that, though, you know, the, how can I say this? So like, next step-wise, I will say is, you know, the non-core asset management plan is going to be coming forward. I think, you know, it is going to shine a light on, you know, our vehicles, our facilities, et cetera, and sort of where we need to invest, how much we need to be investing in, in annual operations and maintenance, minor repairs, as well as sort of the overhaul and renewal aspect. It should be no surprise, our last non-core asset management plan still showed a considerable backlog. Our core asset management plan showed a backlog, so we anticipate we'll still see that. And the next step, of course, will then be figuring out a financial strategy to start tackling that slowly over time. You know, we need to be able to illustrate over horizon that we're able to be, you know, financially sustainable moving forward. And that's where things like the annual capital, you know, our capital levy, for example, being able to increase that over time, to have that sustainable funding that can be geared towards this ongoing asset renewal will really help us meet those goals of renewing our assets and closing, closing the infrastructure gap over time.
Perfect. And if, and if somehow we don't reach those, I know we are, but what happens if municipality, maybe our CHIO, and, and would the province step in at that point and not give you grants or whatever to go forward to doing stuff like that? Or what would happen?
Yeah, so through the mayor, so far, you know, the, most grants have been contingent on us staying on track to meet the requirements of having the core asset management plan done, you know, shortly having the non-core plan done. As far as I'm aware, I don't think they're going to be punitive necessarily in terms of holding back because we're not at a target, but I think they are going to want us to illustrate what those targets are and what our plan is to try to achieve it. I don't think they're necessarily going to penalize municipalities for not hitting them by a certain date necessarily. Can't speak for the province, but I think they just want to know that, you know, councils are aware of what the pressures are, and that they need a plan in place to sort of remedy that over a period of time. And I'm, we're hopeful, at least I'm hopeful, that in getting all of this asset management information across the province, the province may then be able to start tailoring grant programs and other initiatives to help municipalities such as ours, such as all of the others, in really catering to helping everybody, you know, dig out of their infrastructure deficits over time. We're not alone in the fact that we have an infrastructure deficit. Most municipalities do. And so I think it'll really be important information for the province to be able to help them know where investments need to be, and if they have the opportunity to support the municipalities.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for our explanation. And our debt, you mentioned, I don't, can't remember the exact amount. Would you be able to, and I think we're doing pretty good as far as that, would you know, or if anyone would know, where we are comparable to other cities in the region? I don't know if Tiffany or yourself could.
Through the mayor, you know, it is sort of, it's, Through the mayor, you know, it is sort of, it's, I'll say it's relative to each municipality in the sense, so right now, based on our revenue streams, we're at about seven and a half percent, give or take, of own-source revenues that's going towards debt repayment. Most of our comparators in the region are anywhere between eight and 10%. So, we're comparable. I'll say we're on the lower end of that currently, but that can, you know, that can change pretty quickly if there's an urgent need for a larger investment. But it is nice to know that our city has that capacity if we do need it, and we're not by any means near any triggers or thresholds that we need to be concerned about at this time.
Perfect. Thanks, Jim.
And the provincial limit that a municipality is allowed to take their debt to is what percent?
25%. We've currently set an internal policy limit of 15%, but of course, that's at the will of council. But yeah, legislatively, 25% is the limit.
25%, and we've set it at 15%, but we're at seven and a half percent. So, we're in a good place. Yeah, thank you for that. Counsel LaCoco, and then you, St.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions either for Mr. Dowling or for our treasurer, and then I'll have some comments later on. This year's budget is 66.6 million, but there was pre-approved of 2024 amounts, and that's 14 million. So, I just want to confirm that the budget is 66 million plus the 14 million of pre-approved before 2024.
So, through the mayor, so the budget this year, truly the ask is the 66 million. From a presentation perspective, we did show some pre-approved amounts within each of the budget asks. And in a lot of those cases, that's where, for example, in 2024, we might be asking for construction money of $2 million, but previous to this year, we had already approved design money. And it's really just to give council, when they're looking at the budget, that holistic view of we've previously approved this amount of money for this initiative, and now you're asking basically for like a future phase. Those amounts have already been approved in prior budgets. So, by no means are the two additive necessarily. It was more so a presentation approach that we took just to be able to give council that holistic view when you're looking at a project, that there have been prior approvals associated with that initiative.
Through the mayor, so that 14 million already had funding from other time periods?
Correct. Not necessarily just 2023. It could have been in a 2022 budget, for example, already approved through that process, through that annual amount. And this was really just our way of illustrating to members of council and the public that some of the, you know, it's not uncommon for capital projects to be multi-phase. So, sometimes you need to do an EA to start or a detailed design to start, then you have a construction phase. And so, in a lot of these cases, it's just tying the two together so that when you look at the project, you can see the holistic, to date, if we approve this construction amount, you know, we've approved in total, say, you know, 2.2 million for this project when you consider prior approvals.
Okay, thank you. Through the mayor, so technically, we have $80 million worth of benefits because we've pre-approved 14 million plus the 66 million. So, there's like $80 million worth of benefits to the city?
Through the mayor, yes. I will just caution that realistically, the 66 million is the net new benefit. We would have, if we were talking about last year's budget around $60 million, we would have already included part of that 14 in there. So, I just don't want to double count any of those allocations. But in terms of the relationship to the 66, you are correct that basically there are prior approved amounts that are associated with the 66 that's being approved this year.
It just looks a little confusing that there's 14 million and 66 million, so I wanted to talk about that.
Understood.
The capital budget requires a 3.45, $3,450,000 transfer from operating to capital. And I've had discussions with Ms. Clark about this. A lot of residents are saying, well, can't you cut certain things in this budget to get it down, and then the transfer would be less? So, I was wondering if Ms. Clark could sort of give the residents a reason why it's there, why we wouldn't want to reduce it, or if we do reduce it, what we would do.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Through the mayor, so that 3.5 million's already built in as a base transfer, as well as the capital levy, to be frank. The one, it's about 1.2 million at this point, the one and a half percent. What I was explaining to Counsel LaCoco earlier this week is excluding or including certain projects on this budget does not necessarily inform the transfer. So, if you decided to remove a project that had funding from the levy budget, it doesn't mean that we would reduce the transfer. We would only reduce the transfer if you directed us to reduce the transfer, which we would absolutely speak out against, but it is ultimately your decision. If you decided not to allocate it in full, the unallocated portion, we would just stick in unallocated reserves and use in the future. Frankly, our three and a half million dollar transfer is very low, as Mr. Dowling already spoke about, are just our core infrastructure deficits, about 7.8 million. So, that number actually needs to grow. So, it is a bit of a misnomer that you can maybe, you control that piece simply by removing projects. You would only control that piece by actually directing us to reduce that transfer to capital.
Thank you. And through the mayor, if we were to reduce that transfer to capital for the asset management progress, how much in deficit are we in capital projects?
Do you want me to say it? So, through the mayor, it is a bit of a challenge to give you a definitive number. So, our core asset management plan, as Ms. Clark mentioned, is about 7.8 million in deficit, we'll say. But that's, you know, that's sort of the annual amount that we need to be contributing over time. That doesn't include the non-core asset management plan, which is going to put further pressure on that. You know, I guess I will just say that it's one of these things where we're at the point where we've been very conservative, I'll say. I think it's great that we've, that we are investing in capital. But again, as Ms. Clark said, I would definitely caution reducing any of those amounts when in reality, you know, when we bring back the asset management plan, when we bring back the financing strategy, every time and time again, they're only going to recommend an increase of that investment to continue trying to chip away at it. It's a little bit challenging to give you a firm number, especially with a non-core asset management plan not quite complete. I just don't want to speak out of turn. But it's safe to say that there is going to be, you know, a bit of a funding deficit there that is only going to compound on top of the existing infrastructure deficit we're aware of with the core asset management plan.
Okay, thank you.
Our CAO is going to weigh in too, Counselor.
Sorry. Thanks, Counselor. And I think this is a tough concept for folks at home sometimes, and even for me. So, I like to simplify. It's like if I own a house, and I have a roof that's 15 years old, and it's got a 20-year lifespan, you know, and I have a few bucks left over at the end of the year, I could blow that on something, or I can start to save that money because I know the roof's going to get, needs to be replaced. It won't last forever. So, when we talk about having a three and a half million dollar transfer, when we have literally hundreds of millions of dollars assets, you know, our hockey arena's 15 years old, or, you know, the three and a half million dollars is a very small amount. And in fact, the presentation, what we're putting away for one and a half percent buys us, whatever, two and a half snowplows and a kilometer and some out of road. So, to take that away, all you're really doing is setting yourself up for a world of pain coming forward. And in 2026, this municipality and every other municipality is going to have to, you know, increase their amount of savings to maintain their assets. So, that's why, that's why, yes, it is a concept. You could put that away, but all that's going to happen is two years down the road, when something needs to be replaced, you have nothing in your reserves to actually replace it. So, that's why it's not a suggested method. And in fact, the province will probably start to require us to put more money away come 2026.
Thank you. I guess the question that came to me would be then, if we are repairing our assets, that's fine. But if we're putting money into obtaining new assets and not repairing some of our old assets, that's when the choices come. What do you want to keep? The assets that you already have and repair them, or you're getting new? And for an example, the cricket, the batting cages, those are new assets. When we were looking at pools, about closing pools, well, you'll have to put money into closing, repairing pools, but you have to be aware that we have all of these new batting cages. And so, you know, there's a balancing act. I see that there's the urgent repairs for Mitchelson that are included in the budget for the clubhouse of 44,000, and then 100,000 for outdoor pool repairs. Are any of those 100,000 for Mitchelson Park?
Through the chair.
Ms. Maldonar is going to deal with this one.
Through to the mayor, thank you. The money that we have included in the capital budget is for emergency repairs for the other four pools. As I mentioned at our last council meeting, all of the pools are aging, and all of the pools have repairs that need to take place. Some of them, of course, are rated poor, and the poor ones such as Prince Charles and FH, we would be looking to spend some money this summer just to ensure that they are safe for all of our participants coming to the pool.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that amount. Going back to Mr. Dowling, he said that there's deferred projects showing in the 2025, and it moves on. It's a living document. They're not pre-approved. This is not a multi-year budget. Is that correct? They're just sort of stuck in there for our knowledge and awareness, but we're not pre approving that. Is that correct?
Should I?
Yeah, through the mayor, that's correct. I like to look at the forecast as a communication tool. So, it's a means of saying that, you know, the, I'll say, the proposed initiative doesn't just evaporate because it didn't get proposed in the 2024 capital budget. It simply moves forward, and it's a good tool for staff and for council to be able to see, you know, what did get deferred and could be reconsidered as part of the following year's capital budget or a future capital budget. But it just goes to show, especially with asset management-related investments, they don't simply just go away. Sometimes there's capacity constraints from either a funding or a staffing perspective that could result in them being proposed to be deferred. But it's more of a, I'll say, a planning exercise in terms of when is the ideal time, or what is the urgency of that item that would dictate exactly when it needs to go forward.
Through the mayor, I know that there's some deferred project municipal work projects in there, and we had some discussions about what was being deferred. Is it safe to have them deferred? And we've gone through all of that. So, I thank staff for putting all of the work into the assessment of all of the projects and whether they're low or high, and if they have to be, are they well-traveled roads? Are they well-used? So, I appreciate that. The rest of mine are all comments, so I'll leave them till later, but those were my questions.
Thank you for that. I've got Counsel Newsteg.
Thank you, your mayor, to Mr. Dowling. Actually, tonight, having our guests come earlier, I found that to be, it kind of was very thought-provoking that we have residents who are very concerned, obviously, about taxes. It affects everyone. They came, and then with some, with explanation from our CEO and the mayor, you could see that there was a greater understanding. And we speak about it being transparent and responsible to our tax, to our ratepayers. Perhaps we should consider having, and because you're such a great presenter, a town hall meeting, because I know people aren't really tuning into this. And I saw that last year when, being our first year out, after we went through all this work for both the capital and the operating, and we increased taxes, and we didn't hear very much from people. I thought, well, that was pretty easy, until they got their tax bill in May or June, and then the phones and everything started, our emails were going crazy. But to give a chance that we can go out and explain, this is a huge city. There's a lot that goes on. There's a lot of responsibility, even underground, that nobody sees the millions and millions of dollars that are underneath. But we, they know it when there are basement floods or all those things. So, there's a responsibility that we have to taxpayers. And I know the natural response is, oh, we just want a zero-based budget. We don't want to pay anymore. But if we can have more education and explain, I know we've got the participatory budget process, but just as a thought, just to include people and really explain what we have and how important it is to make these decisions. And I don't know, just a thought.
Any feedback?
I'll chime in super quick, if you don't mind. So, through the mayor, two quick things. So, I know that through our communications department in the past, we have done a couple educational videos. Now, they've been a little bit more focused on, at least the ones that I've participated in, have been a little bit more focused on infrastructure deficits, user fees, a couple topics like that. But, you know, well heard. I think the sort of continuous education piece is something that we should always sort of be mindful of. We also did a budget engagement survey this year. So, I know we did get a lot of feedback through that process from the residents in terms of what their hopes or expectations are to see in the budget. And we were able to gauge a little bit of an idea of, you know, would they want to see service cuts over increases, et cetera. But I agree with you. I don't think there's, you know, I certainly think that there's more opportunities for us to help with that educational component within the scope of what we can do at the local level.
And I applaud you, especially with that. But that's just one side. Whereas if we had a town hall, we could have more discussion, as we saw tonight with the residents that came. And I was very pleased to see how they responded once they were, once things were explained to them, as there's only so much that we can move and what is it that we want to cut. And basically, it comes down to what kind of city do we want to live in? And that's for, we need to hear from everyone. But I thank you. It's been a wonderful presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you. I also cut off Mr. Burgess if you wanted to say something.
Yeah, Mr. Or CEO.
No, I, we'll take it under advisement. We do have significantly more public engagement than a few years ago, but adding a town hall, my only suggestion is because it's the mayor's budget, I think the mayor would also have to be part of the presentation.
Well, I really hope he would defer it to James, Mr. Dowling, because he's just, he did such a good job.
Yes. No, but we'll, we can certainly put it in, and we think it would be, you know, we would have to schedule it in the fall potentially with the survey so that you get the input before we draft the budget on the priority. And I think what's really important is understanding what can actually be dealt with in the budget. So, we'll take that under advisement. Ms. Darlington has made the notes for the comms team.
Okay, so you're good, Counselor?
I'll ask my questions after.
After, it's okay. Counsel LaCoco, then, Patel?
Assessed at 200,000. You would take $1.35 and multiply it by 200, and then your increase for the year is 270, because that $8 a month really threw us all off, and it threw a lot of the residents. So, the request is, can we, that's a nice number to look at, but can we look at a specific dollar amount, what it is? Because it's very easy for people to multiply what their assessment is, and then they'll know how much their increase is.
Mr. CEO?
Yeah, through the chair, we changed the communications. We use that weird average, which is a requirement so we can be comparable. But we also put in a $500,000 home, which was a bit more closer than median, and an even number that people could divide. But we can, we can easily do it by the thousand to it. But we started doing everything for a $500,000 assessment to keep it even. So, we can certainly add that into our comps.
That would be great. It's just something more that the resident would understand and be able to multiply their increase. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counsel Patel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think this question would be, I'm not sure, is for James or Mr. CEO. For a percentage of debt, does it affect our borrowing cost? For example, if our debt is lower than other cities, are we paying less interest?
Mr. CEO?
Through the chair, under the municipal act, it's actually the region that borrows the money on behalf of the lower-tier municipalities. So, it's their actual credit rating, and how their credit rating is determined is actually the collective debt of the region. So, whether we have lower debt or higher debt, it doesn't change the borrowing cost. Also additionally, a lot of our borrowing is not marketplace debt. It's Infrastructure Ontario Place debt, and Infrastructure Ontario doesn't vary it as much because it is a Crown Agency already. So, long answer to your question is, no, it doesn't affect our rate of borrowing.
Another question to you, Mr. Mayor. Have we seen a significant drop in the development charges last year? Has it affected our budget whatsoever?
I wish I could say it has. We haven't had a lot of growth, and that's one of the things that we'll be talking about in our levy budget. So, we've seen a slowdown in permits issued. So, it's hard to say, oh, that development charge change has impacted it. What's really impacted it is the fact that we just don't have a lot of development going on. So, and for us, you know, we're a little bit fortunate because we're just doing our DC study now. So, unlike some municipalities that just passed a DC bylaw, I got whacked with it. We can actually, we're all, it doesn't impact us as much because we're just about to go into a new DC bylaw. And our DCs were traditionally low, significantly low. So, even with the clawback, we can, we can manage our financial exposure a lot better.
And another question to you, Mr. Mayor. We have a firefight, a fire truck we are approving this year. So, that's $3 million. And to my knowledge, it's not going to be delivered till two and a half years or three years. So, how are we allocating those, that $3 million?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that. How are we?
How are we, what are we doing with those $3 million now? Like, we are proving them now. So, what are we doing with that money for three years?
So, yeah, so the best practice is to, and it's something that we're instilling into it, is that when you approve the budget, you account for the financing of the budget. If you, for example, and I'm not sure if that was a debt one or not a debt one, is a debt one. So, we, we'd like to So we, we'd like to get to the point, the best practice is you account for what's called the debt placeholder, how much it would cost to pay for the debt each year, even if you're not paying for that debt till a year later. Because once that debt is actually incurred, you actually have, you've actually levied for it. And it allows for any variances in the interest rates because you build up that thing. So any positive variance, you know, if you're being taxed quote-unquote "early", any positive variance goes to the capital reserve, which, as you can tell, we mostly pull a lot from our capital reserve. So some people say, oh, you're taxing me too early. The reality is we're not, because that money's sitting in a reserve, and we've used it to pay for something else. So, so we just, that's just the way you account for it, that once it's approved, council knows that they have the money to pay for it, and we can go and procure it. And the reality is, sometimes we need those positive variances because what we think is a $3 million truck, by the time the tender comes in, might be a $3.2 million truck, because that's the way things are going these days. So.
Then I have another question is to, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure who to answer it. But we looked, when we looked at the parking budget, we have parking reserve. Do we have the same system for other departments?
Mr. CAO?
No, we consolidate the reserves. The, the challenge with the parking reserve is that, or not the challenge, but the discipline around a parking reserve is that it has to be self-sustainable. And it's, it's like that water is the same way. Water, you can't, you can't cross the streams. You can't have taxpayers subsize the water system. So we don't have those reserves specifically for departments like that. We just have an overall corporate kind of capital reserve. We do have too many reserves at this point in time that we'll be bringing back to council to, to kind of consolidate. Because the real, when you get into the asset management plan, you know, we'll need essentially one reserve to deal with the assets that are, that are there. So though there are some specific reserves, we do have that. We're trying to minimize those.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Nichols. In municipal work, there is the fixtures and furniture for $2 million. Would you be able to explain what that is? Page 15.
Mr. Nichol?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We might need some time to look into that. It's, there's not, it's not like we're buying $2 million worth of furniture or specific fixtures. It could be equipment. It could be vehicles. But give us a bit of time, and, and, Mr. Mayor, we'll circle back with us when we've found that answer.
While you're there, Ms. Nichols, how long is the, for example, do we buy vehicle? For example, if I truck, what is the lifespan? How long do we keep a truck?
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. We, we would make that decision based on the, the type of truck, and if it's a commercial vehicle or a standard passenger-type vehicle. Generally, it'd be between eight to 10 years.
And have you looked into purchasing an electric vehicle for other uses? Because I think there are some grants or some subsidies you can get if you're using the electric vehicles.
Yeah, thanks. And through you, Mr. Mayor. You, if you recall our last meeting, we're, we're working on some grants for some of the charger infrastructure, and, and we would like to procure the first three electric vehicles we have for our building and, and bylaw departments. Once we know how that will be of any, you know, cost savings to us, or if it's not cost savings to us, we want a bit of time to review the business case on those electric vehicles, and also to wait for those electric vehicles to become more readily available. There's a long lead time now. So we do think it's part of the business plan going forward. Just need a bit of time to determine which ones and where.
Thank you. I just have one suggestion for our, for capital budget next year or even municipal work. Would we be able to have a list of how many culvert we have? How many bridges we have? What we are doing?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. All of that information will be part of our asset management plan. So we do have that in our core asset management plan, which is bridges, culverts, roads, water and sewer. We'll be coming forward with all of the other things, like our buildings and our parks and our fleet vehicles. So I, I can definitely provide that to the council, or perhaps as a takeaway for next year, we can give a snapshot of here's what we have, and here's what it would cost to replace all of this if we had to do it all together.
Yeah, that, that makes it much easier for us to explain to residents when they're calling us and telling us, my culvert is rusting and it's not working, and you guys haven't changed it. You guys are increasing taxes every year, right? So it's easier for us to explain when we have a list of it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. I've got, who do I have? Counselor Newsteg?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And I think this question would be to the fire chief. With regards to the new fire truck that you are asking for $3 million, there's a couple, a number of questions that I have regarding it. So when you're, you're saying that it's the only one in North America that, of this type. So is it necessary that we're the only one to have a truck? Can you explain the purpose and the function for us to spend that? I have a whole bunch of questions regarding it. So we'll start with that one.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your question. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Typical ladder truck or platform truck that we're requesting in this budget has our multi-use vehicles. Obviously, it's an elevated device, so we can reach higher elevations. This particular truck that we're looking for is a 100-foot platform, so we can get to several stories above ground in, in terms of a rescue. It also serves as an elevated water stream. So we can, we can push water from a much higher area, not just from the ground, in terms of protecting exposures. If there's, if you can envision a townhouse versus some of our older subdivisions where houses are further apart, we may use that to, you know, protect exposures, if you will, or actually use it to extinguish buildings that have collapsed. And it makes it difficult to get water into, into those areas. Another use of the, the platform, particular to this vehicle, is that it's very dangerous because of the way that construction has changed. It's lightweight construction, homes that are being built today versus 20 or 30 years ago. They collapse much, much quicker. So for us to get on roofs is not ideal, to cut holes in the roof to allow the heat to come out. So having a platform and an elevated, we can actually work on a roof without actually stepping foot onto the roof for fear that firefighters would actually fall into those structures. So we can cut holes on an elevated platform, which is safer. And what's unique to us here in Niagara Falls is our ability to rappel. So there is a, a custom winch system that's in the bucket, that's up in the air. And firefighters are attached from a rope, and that winch lowers firefighters up and down. So if you can envision, if we had to perform a rescue into the gorge, the, the ladder truck can, can extend itself over, and we're able to lower a firefighter down into the gorge, perform a rescue, and, and then bring that person and that firefighter back up again onto the ground where they can seek some medical attention. So that particular function, which we call the skyhook, it, it, it has a significant name. It, it is very unique. We're, we're the only fire department that performs that type of skyhook rescue in North America. We know that because fire truck manufacturers won't build a truck that has that type of tip load that could perform that rescue. They like to mass-produce vehicles as a simple answer. So because we have the falls and the gorge, it's a significant demographic in our, in our community. That is heavily utilized for rescue scenarios along the gorge. We also are in an automatic aid agreement with Niagara Lake because the gorge continues all the way through. So we, we do rescues on their behalf as well via cost recovery. So that unique function is, again, only, we perform those rescues in Canada and throughout North America.
And you said cost recovery when it's used over Niagara Lake?
Correct.
Okay. How often does this truck go out? I've got a lot of questions on this truck.
Yes, again, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I pulled some stats. In 2022, the Ariel responded to just shy of 600 calls. And we performed 37 rope rescues in 2022. And then already in 2023, we're above that in total calls, and we're already at 39 rope rescues to the end of November. And we still have another month to go.
And that truck is housed at the Morrison location?
Correct. Station one on Morrison Street.
Okay. I have another question. So it said that we have a 20-year life, but it was, we purchased it in 2009. So we're looking at it right now. So we're still a few years out, five years out. Why are we budgeting for it now?
Yes, again, thank you. And through you, your worship to the counselor. So our, in, in the NFPA standard with regard, that oversees a fleet replacement in the urban area, we're, we're permitted to replace our vehicles at 15 years and then place them into reserve for the remaining five. They have a 20-year cycle. In the rural areas, for example, in our, in Chippewa, Willoughby, and Crolin, where it's less populated and their call volume is less, we replace those vehicles at 20 years, obviously because they're in a lot better condition, because they haven't responded to that many calls. So the Ariel one, the truck that we're discussing, is 15 years old. And so, and unfortunately, as a result of COVID, if you try to buy a vehicle today, the delivery times are, you know, they've, there are more than three or four times that they were pre-COVID. We're anticipating that if we were, if we have approval, a council's approval for purchases truck, there'll be at least two, two and a half, maybe up to three-year delivery of the new truck. And then by the time that we do its training and our, and our fleet mechanics have, you know, done their safeties and looked over the truck, it'll be some time. So it'll give us that buffer, because we actually don't know when the truck will be delivered, and still meet our underwriters within a 20-year overall in utilizing the existing truck we have today.
Any final questions? Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Counselor Patel?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This question's for Chief Two. We have those two water rescue robots. Does any other city have them in operation right now? What are the results of that?
So we, we invited a manufacturer of this rescue robot, which is a robot that is controlled by a, a remote, a remote joystick, if you will. And this manufacturer came to Niagara Falls. We met him at a trade show in Toronto. We invited the other fire departments in the region to come. Of course, we have a lot of water in the Niagara region. And they demonstrated in two locations. They, they demonstrated the robot down by Hornblower because the waters there are very unpredictable. And we also did it in the Welland River. And we felt that this robot is particularly useful above the falls, at the brink. We, we've had, just this year alone, we had three incidences where people have either fallen off their, their, their watercraft, their pleasure craft, whatever, and made it very close to the brink. And unfortunately, we can't get to them because the water level is so low at the brink with our marine units. So we're left with throwing, throw bags and with hopes that the individual can, can grab a hold of it. This remote robot will allow us to send a life jacket or a preserver with a rope to the individual, and he can latch on. And if he has the ability to put on the life jacket or possibly hang on to the robot, the robot will bring him back, that person back to us, where we can get a hold of him before they make their way over the brink.
That will be when he's producing, when it's cold, when it's raining, when it's nature special waters, when it's cold and icy.
Absolutely. Times of the essence, of course. And through this budget, we are also requesting two robots, one for ourselves and, and one for St. John's ambulance as well.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Nichol?
Thank you. And to the counselor, we have a follow-up on the fixtures. This is $2 million fixtures budget. So if you look at page 163 and 164, which you don't need to do right now, we are asking for a $2 million project for the replacement of our remaining streetlights. So in 2015, we replaced all of our Cobra Head streetlights with LEDs, but we didn't complete all of our decorative streetlights. So there's about 1,600 fixtures that are remaining as non-LED fixtures. And so the $2 million in that fixtures and furniture item is for the streetlight decorative upgrade.
Thank you. That was for your department.
It was a good one for us.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of members of council to either Mr. Dowling or other staff members? Okay. At this point, what would council like to do?
I will have a couple comments. No questions, just the comments.
Sure.
Actually, in our web development project, I actually see lots of, through you, Mr. Chair. I see our website has improved a lot. And I do see it because I have checked it out a few times, because I, I actually helped a couple of residents to navigate through our website, and it was very hard back then. The three months ago was very hard. Now they have developed, and it is getting much easier. So I'm very pleased the rate department is making progress, and we are investing in our web development funds. So I'm really pleased with that. And another thing I want to point out is we are, we are investing in our affordable housing. $4.5 million, is that enough? No. But with our budget and municipal capacity, we are making progress. And I'm really pleased to see that we are making progress because everybody in this council ran on election platform for affordable housing. And I think we are all making progress. And even if it's a small progress, as long as it goes slow and steady, I think we are going to see a result by a couple of years. So I'm really happy with that.
Okay. Thanks. Counselor DeCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know last time when we were, last year when we were looking at the budget, our CAO said that we are a council that keeps adding items during the year. And I think we have to be conscientious about that, that we're not adding things throughout the year, that we need to stick with this budget and not keep adding things. So I wanted to put that out there. I have, I've always expressed concerns about our financial commitment to the hospital. And in this report, it talks about the $20, $21 million in debt that we're issuing in 2025 for the infrastructure. So I just want to put that out there for the reconstruction of the hospital, of the, of the roads near the hospital. I, I know we need a hospital, and I know we need infrastructure. But with our commitment of $30 million to the hospital and the amount of money that we're putting for the roads, I do have concerns about that. So that, that's a debenture we're going to be doing in 2025. That's a huge amount there. The participatory budgeting, I wanted to bring that up. I brought this up a few years ago. Not only does it make our, our residents aware about what's going on, but it makes them aware about the cost of what things cost. And just like when you're running your, your budget at home, you're picking and choosing different things based on the value to you, how much they cost. Do we need it? So I think it's really good that we, we have that participatory budgeting, that our residents can know about that. One of the other things in the budget, we're using some cost sharing with other municipalities in the region. That's great. A lot of people, a lot of municipalities are doing the same thing. So instead of having different people out doing the, the same project and doing RFPs, do some cost sharing. So that was really good. I'll, I'll bring this up again about not wanting to reduce the transfer, but I think maybe we should look at different projects to use the transfer on. Again, if we're not repairing some of our older projects, and then we're jumping to new projects, there's competing interests there. So there are some things within the budget that I think maybe we, we should defer for another year and maybe utilize the money to repair and maintain. Some of them, like the Garner Trail, $150,000. The Baden Powell Trail, $120,000. So I'm thinking, rather than having something new, let's use that money to repair and maintain some of the assets. Oh, I, I did have one question I forgot to ask. It talked in the report about adding a new stormwater fee for our residents. What exactly is that? How much is it going to be? When is it going to be implemented?
Was that Mr. Nichol's question?
I didn't write the page down, but it was in there somewhere.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Did you say a stormwater fee?
Yes, a new stormwater fee.
If I'm not mistaken, I think we might have said that's an option for future funding, but it's not something we're recommending at this time.
Okay, so that, it's an option. Could you explain what that is? Mr. Dowling?
I can step in. Some municipalities are starting to adopt a stormwater fee. So right now, currently, all the storm-related infrastructure is weighted on our tax levy budget. So. now, currently, all the storm-related infrastructure is weighted on our tax levy budget. So as you'll see in the budget this year, for example, you know, we've got about a million dollars or so to help maintain some of our stormwater ponds, just as a simple example. What some municipalities are starting to do is look at ways to assess a fee based off of the impermeability of the land of your property. So for large commercial complexes, for example, if they've got these huge parking lots and it's sending all of the rainwater into the storm system, is there an opportunity to introduce a fee to help cover the costs that that's putting on the system? I will say, it's, it's something that I think I'll say is a little bit untested in the sense that it's really just starting to pick up right now. And I think there's a lot that we can learn from peer municipalities that are exploring it. Pros and cons, to be honest. I will say that, you know, as much as, as much as it might have been a suggestion, it's really just highlighting the need for additional investment in our stormwater infrastructure. And it's, it's a tool that some municipalities are using. But I will say, it's rather complex. Some municipalities are also then trying to offer credit programs to incentivize managing your own stormwater. But, you know, I will say that we are, I, in the research I've done anyway, there does seem to be quite a large administrative burden associated with that. So just being mindful that you don't want to introduce a fee and then have to introduce a lot more additional costs just to administer the fee. So for now, it's not something recommended, but it is an option that's out there. And we just wanted council to be aware that some municipalities are taking that approach.
Okay, thank you. Through the mayor, that's not for every residential household. That's for developments, commercial developments, things, new things coming up, or everyone existing right now, existing households?
It, through the mayor, it could be both. So some municipalities are taking the approach of charging, say, like a flat fee to residential homeowners, just to try to keep it simple. And then more of a mathematical approach, I'll say, based on area for, for commercial clients. But again, that being said, it's not something that we've necessarily given any serious thought to. It's just proposing it for full transparency purposes, that other municipalities are exploring options of a fee model like that.
Okay, thank you. On page 100, sorry, I, never mind, I've answered my own question about that, never mind. When developers build a development, they either give us cash in lieu of parklands, or they give us a park. And I know that we were talking about maybe not having a whole bunch of small, little parks all over, because it takes a lot of work and maintenance to maintain them. Maybe we should have larger parks. I was speaking with Ms. Dolch and, and asking, when the developer gives us the park, we then have to maintain it for X number of years after the developer is finished. Could we not look at a base fee and then a maintenance fee every year to take care of that? Ms. Dolch said that we could ask, but they could say no. So I just wanted to put it out there to think about every time we're given an asset, we now have to maintain it for X number of years for the lifecycle of that asset. So I...
I don't know if you want to tackle that, Mr. CAO?
Yeah, sure. The other trend is what's called POPs. So they're privately owned public spaces, where the ownership does not transfer. It stays with the development company, and they maintain that space, but there's public access granted to that space. That's, that's been more of the trend versus a transfer of ownership and then some type of maintenance fee, because that's not required. And in fact, that's really against what the province is asking to do, is they're trying to lower the cost for development for affordability reasons. But we have entertained with some developers the concept of POPs going forward. So that might be a trend.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a lot of conflicting, yes, we want parks, yes, we want money for parks, but then the higher the cost, then the higher the cost for the resident to purchase it. So it's very conflicting. I know that there was comments about a lot of new hires, and a lot of residents have contacted me saying, like, why, why do we keep hiring people? There was, I think, over 16 last time, last year, and quite a few this year. I was wondering if our CAO could give us an idea about why we're hiring and explain some of the employment issues that are out there in the HR world and keeping good people. And then I have another question after that regarding the hiring.
Thank you. Some of the hiring, specifically for the capital budget, is project-specific. It's very difficult to hire, and we're in a very competitive market space. So it's very difficult to hire some of these high-skilled positions on a contract basis. You just don't get the talent. So, you know, we will hire on a full-time basis, and when the project's completed, we'll evaluate the overall needs of the organization at that time. Because you do have, with hundreds of employees, you have retirements, you have, you know, other people leaving for their jobs. So if we can bring in talent, anytime we can acquire talent, we will figure out a way to use them going forward, because usually there's a departure. But the reality is trying to put jobs out for a one-year contract, or a two-year or a three-year contract, people will just go for a full-time position someplace else. And frankly, if you get a three-year contract for a project here in the municipality, there, within those three years, there's probably another opportunity that pops up. So that they'd apply, book into, so you might as well just hire them full-time. The other challenge we have is we, you know, for the capital project specifically, we're having difficulty with our current staff complement to manage the projects that are there. That's why we're bringing them on. So when you look at an ERP project, you can't do that off the corner of your desk. You have to have dedicated people working on that project for three years. So that's the other reason that's driving it. We don't run with a high level of staff, so any large incremental project, we don't have the, we don't have the additional bandwidth to, to deploy staff internally. That's why we have to pick up new staff.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to go on the 4.3 for the affordable housing. I know Councillor Patel just brought it up. When I was looking at it, I've been looking at affordable housing, modular homes, tiny homes, ADUs for a number of years. And we've come a long way from our transitional housing, our bridge housing, our shelters. Niagara Falls is really leading in, in that area. I feel that the affordable housing, we've put that money aside, but it's been aside for quite a while. And there's a lot of other communities that are bringing projects forward with large number of units, and we, we don't have any affordable housing units. We're doing great on the other side, but we're really, I think, behind on the affordable housing. And I just wondered if our CAO can give us some ideas about timing when these affordable housing units will, will, will come into effect, because I think we are lagging in this affordable housing affects more people than the transitional, the bridge housing and the shelters.
Mr. CAO?
Thank you. And I'll give a plug to the regional folks who's on this file. They'll always talk about a housing continuum from shelters to, you know, homeownership. And I agree, we've, with Buchanan and, and our bridge housing program, which is now the Wayne Campbell Building. You know, we have focused on two areas there. What you will see is there was a in-camera report for the purchase of 12 micro-units, which would be for individuals in a certain income range. So it would be kind of that missing middle type of component to it. And we will be bringing, going, council did approve us going out to market for the Park Street development, which would be a large, substantially attainable housing development in the downtown. So those are, those will be three. They'd be targeted at, you know, individuals kind of in that $40,000 worth of income to $70,000 worth of income, which is having difficulty finding affordable units here in Niagara Falls. So as far as timing goes, the, the first 12-unit project, we're hoping to have that completed, or construction started before 2026 and complete it in 2027. And Park Street will be out to the RFP later this year, and then we'll see what the construction schedule is, because that would be a much larger complex. That'd be 130-plus unit construction project.
Thank you. Can we go back to the Park Street one? I, I know the RFP, but what kind of timeline are we looking at? Because we're, you add all, all the years that we've been waiting and trying to do things, and, you know, we, we do have the, the desire to do something, but that's a lot of years that have gone by that we don't have those units. What kind of year are we talking about?
You know, I would think construction is, we're going to have to zone it. I think construction is likely two years for that. It will be dependent upon who our partner is on that project going forward.
Okay. And you said 130-plus units? When we were originally talking about Park Street, we were talking about a smaller percentage, and it was a lot lower number of units. So now what you're talking about is 130 units?
We, we'd like to increase the density on that project to get the number of units and focus more on singles and the concept of micro-units, which are, you know, 400 to 500 square feet. But it'll be up to the market to come back. We'll, we'll look for different proposals to see what they can do with that piece of land, and see what they can do to maximize the number of units there. It's going forward. So, but we think, we think it'd be kind of in the 130-plus range is what internally we think we could get out of that property.
That's great. Are there any other opportunities with land that the city already owns that we could turn something around quickly for affordable units?
Not, not, nothing that we're working on. I think the quickest one will be the, will be the one that was subject to the in-camera two months ago, because that one is, that one, the contractor is already zoned for it and has, you know, progressed to a stage where they're more readily able to do their pre-sales and get to the market. So those would be the two quickest ones going. Anything else would require zoning, planning and that stuff to move forward. So those are the two quickest ones coming forward. That's under city control.
Okay, thank you. My last comment, a lot of residents contacted me about the million-dollar parking study. I don't think they realized it was under the deferred project, sorry, under, under contingent, that if we got the half grant, then we would do that parking study. And I was wondering if the CAO could talk about the need for the parking in the downtown?
Mr. CAO?
Thank you. We're looking at strategies to increase, increase in, you know, construction and speed of construction and, and intensification of the construction. So if you require someone to build an apartment building, and they require one parking spot per, per unit on that, on that building, they're generally going into underground parking, which is very expensive, which adds to the cost, which diminishes the affordability of the unit. So what we were looking at was a strategy to say, we'll centralize the parking, multiple, multiple projects could use that parking, be a more efficient, lower-cost structure to increase the affordability of it and to increase the number of units that can be brought on in the downtown. So the, so the downtown will, you know, is a transportation hub with a go-station there. We'd like to see increased intensification of buildings down here. So, you know, higher density on those buildings. And to maximize the density, having a centralized parking for those units would, would be more cost-effective for the developer and therefore for the ultimate buyer or renter of that property. So that's really the, the housing affordability strategy. It's really a housing affordability strategy for the, for the downtown core.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other? Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I'll start off just with some general comments, and then, and then I have a couple of questions of staff. I guess my first general comment, Your Worship, is it's nice to see a strong and healthy capital budget. Anytime that we're investing more money than we did last year, I think last year was just under $62 million, and this year we're up to $66 million. It just means, Your Worship, that council and largely a part of staff are bringing us a budget which shows that we're reinvesting back in the community. So when you're looking for a motion to approve the six recommendations, I'm happy to move that. You can take that now if you want and ask for a second here, and then I'll continue.
Why don't we do that, and then you can amend it?
Sure.
I've got a motion, my Councillor Peter Angelo. Look, a Councillor Newestager is going to second that. Yeah, I've got the second, Councillor Thompson. Thank you. So the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Just a couple other general comments. I know debt was brought up a couple of times. Right now, we're at about 7.5% of our own source revenue. We have an internal policy that allows us to go up to 15%. The province has set a ceiling of 25%. Your Worship, I've always said, I'm, I'm, I'm very debt-averse, especially when it comes to, I, I guess, looking after the finances of the municipality. I would prefer if we were on our trend downward. So I, I guess, just a couple of questions to staff and through you to Mr. Dowling. Mr. Dowling, I know you talked about assets that, you know, are going to be here for a long time. You mentioned the fire truck. The fire truck represents 3 million. This year, we're just under 13 million of debenture. There's a lot of assets that the municipality has that really have that type of lifespan. There's sidewalks that last that long. There's, you know, there's roads that last that long, sewers that last that long. We can literally use a lot of different, I guess, items and say that they're going to be here for the long term, so we can use it for debenture. Is there a way that we, I guess, bring a policy forward where we only use it for large capital purposes? And I'll, I'll give you my thoughts on this. Ever since the 2000s, and I can go back even into the 90s if you want, but since the 2000s, I'm, the McBain Center would have been a very large capital build, where we needed to acquire a lot of money. And you can't do that in one single capital budget, because I think that year it was 15 million. The Gale Center was over 30 million. If we were to take 30 million from this capital budget, we're basically cannibalizing all the other projects that we have. That's when we need to, I guess, take on debt. But the trend I see now is, you know, to, I guess, adopt a debenture for a lot of little projects that, that really add up to the 13 million. There isn't one smoking gun. And the other one in the 2000s, Your Worship, is the one that's going to be coming on stream, our Arts and Cultural Center, you know, just behind Main Street. So those are very, those are very large buildings, large purchases. That's when I would imagine that we would use debenturing. But what I see right now in terms of the trend, and I can even go back in other capital budgets, is a lot of little things that, that, that we're debenturing for. What would it take to bring in a policy so that we look at debenture when it becomes a very large, like a major ticket item? That's something I would be interested in seeing, Your Worship, as opposed to just simply taking on debenture every single year. I think it would help us really as we look forward, and it would also help us to reduce our overall debt load. I understand there's pros and cons through both sides. You know, you take on debenture, you get the project, you know, in your municipality this year. The, the con to that goes back to something that Mr. Burgess was saying earlier, in the sense that, you know, we don't control all, all of the budget. Once you take on a debenture, then you have that payment. You have to make that payment every single year. So the control that you have over your budget is actually limited if you start to take on too much debt. So I'll just leave that with you. I don't know if you have any comments, and then I'll have another comment, Your Worship, after.
Yeah, Mr. Dowling?
So through the mayor, hear you loud and clear on that. And I will say, you're right, that has been the past practice for these really large capital investments to, to use debentures for those scenarios. What I will say, in terms of what's changed since, I think, you know, one being because we have been historically conservative, there was, you know, some capacity for us to use debt as an instrument to try to help us catch up. I think the one thing I will say is that, you know, you're not wrong, and internally we've tried to focus debt more so on larger projects. I will say, comparably smaller than something like a McBain Center or a Gale Center. We are trying to focus it on, you know, a million dollars plus, say, as a guideline. What I will say is that it's a little bit indicative, though, of the fact that we don't quite have enough of that transfer to capital, so like our annual capital levy, to really be able to make that, you know, have enough upfront money for a lot of these investments. So while $3 million doesn't sound like much compared to a $36 million facility, $3 million is more than half of our entire annual transfer from the tax levy over to the capital budget. So, you know, I will just say, it's, it's a bit of a strategy on our part, I'll say, and you'll probably notice that a lot of the debt that we have been recommending has either been related to a, I'll say, a tax levy-related item, not something that's necessarily funded through the water wastewater budget, or it's something that is development-related, where we need that longer time horizon, because, for example, if it's development charge-related, like Councillor LaCoco's comment earlier about some of the Montrose bigger investments, you know, in reality, we want that longer time horizon, because we haven't collected enough in development charges upfront, because that development hasn't happened yet. So there's a bit of an advantage for us to use debt strategically in some of those scenarios, especially when development charges can help service that debt, so that we're able to make sure that we can then collect that, you know, it's sort of a, it's a chicken-and-egg scenario with the municipality often needing to front-end some of that development. We need to put the, the water mains and the sewers and the roads in for a lot of that development to happen. So we end up having to put out the money upfront. But the debenture gives us that opportunity to spread out the payments, so that we can collect enough from all of those benefiting developments over time. So there's certainly strategies where I would agree it makes the most sense. You know, a, a policy could potentially be a little bit rigid, but I think it's something that, you know... but I think it's something that, you know, perhaps a a guideline or a guiding principle could be adopted moving forward, that we are a little bit more cautious of that. And, you know, perhaps we we justify it a little bit more in each of the recommendations when we are, you know, suggesting that debt be used as a funding source just so that there's that additional context as to maybe why in this scenario versus, um, deferring the project altogether.
Yeah, Council?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Just on that, uh, thanks, Mr. Dowling. Um, I I would definitely agree to a guiding principle as opposed to a policy. I just, I I I know we're a little bit better than average right now. And and, you know, Mr. Dowling talked about, you know, the fact that most municipalities are between the 8 and 10% range. I just also know that we always have big projects on the horizon, whether it's the replacement of the service center or building our own industrial park. There's gonna be times where we're gonna have to borrow large amounts of money. I don't want to ever be, um, average. I always want to be better than average. So, um, perhaps if we can use that as a guiding principle, then, you know, then we'll stop with all the small projects so that we have some room when when staff do come to, uh, council with a major project. Um, so thank you for that. Your Worship, the other item I wanted to mention is just in the deferred project section, there was the NSNT trail.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, um, I have had some conversations with staff, um, not about putting it in with the budget that's in front of us right now, but how do we get it to the point where we're actually moving forward with it? And I know a lot of times, Your Worship, we, uh, don't use any of our fourth-quarter OLG funds. Uh, simply, we we try to reserve them so that we can use them in the following year's capital budget. Um, as of right now, we haven't used any of our fourth-quarter OLG funds, which is good. We also haven't used up all of our third-quarter funds, Your Worship. So I guess my question would be, um, through you to staff, is it possible to come back in the new year, um, maybe take a look at, uh, the overall, um, price tag that we have, uh, in the budget for the NSNT line? I think that there's some, uh, there's some items there that staff, um, will probably look at and say that it's not necessary to move forward with. I understand that one of the bigger ticket items is, uh, screening, um, when you're going through, uh, in terms of people's residential backyards. Um, and that staff, uh, would really like to see that kept in. Uh, but there's other things there, Your Worship, that that we don't have to spend the money on. Um, so maybe if I could just get a comment from staff in terms of, um, you know, whether or not it's possible to come back to council with a report early on in the year. And I I know that there's some third-quarter, uh, OLG funds that aren't used up yet. I'd like to see at least phase one, uh, be moving forward, uh, even if it's not both phases, Your Worship.
Mr. Okay, Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, certainly, s- the the project is at about 50% design right now, and we're just about to open up some public engagement. So the good news is we're not losing any progress on, um, moving the NSNT trail first phase forward. And the first phase represents the section between Kaler and Montrose, the west side of the QEW, and the section between Meadowvale and Drummond on the east side of the QEW. So it's a sizable section through the urban, um, residential neighborhoods. What I can propose to council is that staff can come back with some further details on phasing opportunities. So phase, you know, the west side of the QW or east side or both, and then opportunities to scale back some of the amenities that have maybe initially been proposed to try to find ways for, um, to meet, um, any of the the Q3 or Q4, uh, OLG dollars that are available. Or potentially, by that time, we might know the status of some of our contingent projects and other funding, um, assumptions that went into the budget that was presented today. So I think it's, it's, it's not a problem, it'd be, uh, no problem at all for us to come back with something in the first quarter for council to see an update on NSNT, NSNT trail, some new updates on, um, what was initially a $2 million proposed budget, ways to bring that down, and then some recommendations on how it could potentially be funded so it could still be constructed in the 2024 calendar year. With the dollars we have approved for design today, we will continue as if we are going to construct it next year. Obviously, without a funding commitment, it won't happen, but we can make sure that the project is shovel-ready so that when the time comes, it it can be advanced forward. And we'll put that that option in front of council.
Counselor?
Yeah, that'd be great, Your Worship. Um, I appreciate that. Uh, I really believe that, uh, trails are a quality of life aspect. Uh, just on the weekend, uh, my son had a curling tournament. I was out in St. Mary's in Ontario, a very small community. Um, but, you know, in between games, I'd gone out for a walk with, uh, with Anita, and we were on their trail system, which again was stone dust. Um, I'll continue to mention that. And there was a lot of people on it. And there was a lot of people on it, Your Worship, and 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 stone dust trails, they they don't cost as much. And I just don't want to see the NSNT line be become another, um, uh, time lag like the Millennium Trail was. The Millennium Trail was first, you know, it was announced at the turn of the century, uh, back in 2000, I think in '1. Um, you know, was when we put in
20 years.
That's right. And we finally finished it in 2023, so 22 years. And and that's really just the north-south corridor. You know, we really need to start on the east-west. And, um, you know, if we don't get started, then it's never gonna happen. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to the report coming back.
To that point? Yep, uh, to that point, Counselor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. And and while Eric's gonna be bringing back a report of maybe some some, uh, cost savings on that trail. And I know, I think part of it was like trying to put fencing on both sides. This trail's a big wide trail. And I know with the Millennium Trail, you only end up with fence on one side. But maybe there's a possible way because we we can just actually put in some trees along the, the trail instead of fencing, and you're gonna help our environment and help our 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 canopy as well. So, um, maybe if we can propose and do something and see what some cost
Creative ways, yeah.
Exactly. Make it more, uh, more natural.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Um, to the, to, does anyone else wants to speak to the? You got all that, Mr. Nichols? Well, yeah, okay, great. Do we, anyone else want to speak to the motion? Okay, it, well, I, did you, I saw a hand? Yeah, okay, Council Patel?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just, uh, get an answer for maybe Ms. Clerk about the impact on operation budget from this capital budget?
Uh, Ms. Clerk?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. The only impact from this budget is going to be the impact of the debt approvals. Um, we would put it, uh, to you in the operating budget that we would phase in the debt placeholders. But similar to last year, that's council's decision whether they wish to pull some of that back like you did last year and phase it in slower. So, um, although there could be an impact, it's not debt we're actually going to realize next year. So, um, we would allow you to, I guess, kick that can down the road and phase that in a little slower if we needed to.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so, um, we do have a motion by Council Peter Angelo on the, uh, six recommendations for this year's proposed capital budget. It's been seconded by Council, uh, Newstaker. I got, I got Newst- Council Newstaker before I heard you, Counselor. I'll get you on the next one for operating. Okay, so if there's no further discussion or, uh, or, uh, questions, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, one opposed, okay? And, uh, that is approved.
Motion, Mr. Angelo.
Oh, and, uh, Counselor Campbell, or is he, um, is he still? I don't see him on there. Is he still on?
He's not on.
He's not, okay. He was on earlier. And, uh, he mentioned that, he did mention he was feeling ill today, maybe from being outside too long yesterday for the event. But anyway, he was on earlier. Um, Counselor Peter Angelo, did you have your hand up?
For a second, I'm very bylaw.
Okay, so now we're at the bylaws. Uh, Counselor Peter Angelo, uh, makes a motion and give the byl- thank you, Mr. Dowling. Well done. Uh, to give the bylaws a first, second, and third reading, seconded by Counselor Thompson. We'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And that's approved. Thank you for that. Motion for adjournment by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Patel. All those in favor, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.